Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the, uh, welcome to the, the May 11th city council meeting. We're in a little bit different venue, uh, same building, different room. And we thank, uh, we thank the Trade Center staff for accommodating us today. And normally we begin our day with, uh, with a, uh, an invocation of God's presence on the proceedings of the council, and we are gonna do that. It's just that our, uh, our, um, uh, Rabbi Schwartz is, is about five minutes away. So we're gonna give her time to get here and we'll, we'll actually launch the, the meeting at that point. So Mike, I think I'm gonna, Mr. King, I'm gonna go ahead with, um, another order of business. Uh, before we even get to the meeting itself, we, uh, we wanna acknowledge and recognize, uh, one of our own who, uh, constantly seems to be achieving beyond most people's reach. And he has done it again. And I'm referring to our city manager Isaiah Hughley. Mr. Hughley, uh, is, for those of you that don't know, is the chairman of his alma mater's board. And he frequently attends, of course, the board meetings, but also graduations at Talladega University. And a couple of weeks ago, on the first of May, he was doing his chairman's duty and going up there and, and, uh, chairing the meeting and also assisting with the conferring of, of diplomas and degrees. And there was an item at the end of the agenda that said special presentation. And before he could sit down, uh, the president joined him at the podium, asked him to look to his left, his entire family had been, uh, secretly invited to the proceedings. He, he didn't know they were there. They actually were put up in a separate hotel room. And, uh, they bestowed upon our city manager, um, an honorary doctorate of humane letters. And, uh, and I, I actually am, am gonna be leaving the meeting because I've, I've got to be at the airport in just a few minutes, but I did not wanna miss the opportunity to add my two cents and to publicly state what anybody who's associated with this consolidated government knows. And that is, we do have the most energetic, intelligent, professional city manager. Certainly in the state of Georgia, certainly in the southeast, and I would be, I would venture to say in, in the country. He has taken apparently to Tuskegee and his, his leadership there, the same leadership qualities that he shows every day in managing a city of 200,000 people. So we, uh, we have a short video, I think, that is gonna be played. And Mr. City Manager, while your staff is getting this video up and ready to go, I have to slip out. But I just wanted to tell you personally and on behalf of the citizens how proud we are of, of the work you do here, but also the fact that you continue to let the ripples from, from your wake touch distant shores. So we have the video, Mr. King.
Chairman Hughley, would you please join me at the podium? Look out in the audience, Chairman. That is the chairman that just walked in. And I'm gonna ask at this time if Mrs. Carolyn Fleming, Hughley, would you please join me at the podium? This distinguished woman who comes forward, she is in the state of Georgia. She is the state representative minority whip representing the state of Georgia. And the spouse of Chairman Hughley. Chairman Hughley, Chairman Hughley has led the way as chairman of the and this tremendous transformation of this college. And I say this with some when there was doubt on this board of trustees about moving forward on whether we should build the new dormitory and build the new student activity. Chairman Hughley was a member of the board at the time. And he said, must do this. He said, we must do this. And look where we are. He's done a tremendous, tremendous job leading the board of trustees here at Talladega College. Great progress under his leadership. He too is a graduate of Talladega College in history and pre-law. He has a master's in public policy and public administration from Mississippi State University. He's appointed city manager of Columbus, Georgia in 2005. He currently is responsible for 3,000 employees. He manages a budget of more than $270 million. He's, he has too many awards he's, has been awarded to, and to acknowledge today, many, many awards. Again, he is Mrs. Carolyn Fleming Hughley, Georgia State Representative Minority Whip. They have two adult children and two grandchildren. It is with great honor and by the power vested in me by the board of trustees, I am honored to confer upon our chairman of the board, our leader, Ms. Isaiah Hughley, the honorary doctor degree of humane letters.
Well, I think we can all agree that well deserved, Mr. City Manager. Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and to the mayor and this is a, the second surprise I've had that I did not know about in the last couple of weeks. I don't think I can stand any more surprises. But let me just, uh, say that, um, well, first of all, thank you to each of you for allowing me to serve as city manager of Columbus, Georgia. It's, uh, it has truly, truly been a blessing.
We're proud of you, Mr. City Manager. I know, I speak for council, uh, in saying that. We've enjoyed, enjoyed your professionalism, uh, and your leadership, uh, since 2005. And this is, uh, you continue to lead outside the city as well, which is proven here in this honorary doctorate that you've received. So we, we appreciate you representing Columbus, Georgia so well, uh, outside Columbus to well deserved.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I would like to, uh, call, um, Councilor Woodson.
Thank you. I just wanna say to the city manager, Isaiah Hughley, thank you. Thank you for everything because even when you were an assistant manager and I came aboard, um, you took me under your wings. You, you mentor me, you, you show me the ropes and, and you've always been there for me. And so from the bottom of my heart and my family, we're so proud of you and congratulations. Well deserved and deserve more than that. Thank you for all you do for everyone. You know, everyone, everyone doesn't always agree with what we do. Sometimes people don't understand, but God has given you that grace, that vision that, that are annoying to help his children. And you have, you cannot please the world, but you have touched a lot of lives. And these are your blessings from God to be recognized for the job you've done for him, not for you. Congratulations. God bless you always and thank you for your friendship.
Thank you, Councilor Woodson. At this time, I'd like to call on, um, Rabbi Beth Schwartz for our invocation. Is she here yet? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and have the pledge while we wait on her, if you would. Rads with me and join me in the pledge. We'll give her a few more minutes and, uh, to get here. While we're waiting, let me, uh, go ahead and give you the update on the, on the COVID situation. We are getting close to our goal of a 100 cases in 100,000 population. This past week, we're down to 11 new cases. We had, uh, and our rolling average is 12. We have only 45, uh, hospitalizations. And the number of deaths attributable to, uh, to COVID is 404. Regarding the vaccinations themselves, we still are giving those out at the Civic Center. They've moved to the Johnson and Johnson vaccination and are open through May 21st. I believe it's from nine to five at the Civic Center. And they are still giving the second dosage of Pfizer vaccine for those that are scheduled to get the second dose. We've vaccinated 86,402, which is very, very good. And those that have received at least one dose is 49,543. And with that, let's move on to, do I hear approval for the minutes? A motion to approve by Councilor Woodson and a second by Councilor Garrett. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, now let's, uh, move into update on the, um, A.J. McClung YMCA mural update. I believe Becca Zajak is going to provide that for us. Welcome. Hold on, let me get the podium turned on.
Good morning, thank you for having me.
Good morning.
Um, can I get the slide deck pulled up? Thank you very much. Good morning, hi, I'm Becca Zajak. I'm the executive director of the Dragonfly Trail Network. I am coming to you guys this morning to give you an update on one of, um, the community public art initiatives we're working on, um, with, um, the city of Columbus, the YMCA, um, and Columbus 2025. So, um, if I need to advance the slide, what do I do? Oh, perfect, thank you. So this idea came about, um, Rob Landers and Jeremy Ackles, uh, came, came to us back in November and, um, were looking at how to incorporate art into, um, the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Celebration in 2021. They were originally looking for a backdrop for, um, putting, putting something behind the artists, uh, because it was a virtual event. And then we thought about how do we make it permanent and, and maybe make it a storage container? And then that really evolved to, could we do a, an actual permanent mural? So it's really, um, thank you to Rob, if he's here today, for kind of getting this project started and making us think about, um, how we could activate, uh, the Martin Luther King Jr. Trail. Because as we started talking, we decided a permanent mural, one of the perfect spots to put that, um, was on the trail. And we started looking for spaces along, um, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The one that really came to the top was the A.J. McClung YMCA building. So we met with Chris Bryant and Coach Peabody to see if they had any interest in, uh, having a mural on their building. And, um, lucky for us, they were interested, uh, in kind of activating their building as well. The work that they are doing inside of that YMCA is nothing short of incredible. And they wanted to help tell their story, uh, of the work they're doing inside the building outside a little bit more. So it became a collaborative project between, uh, Dragonfly Trails and the YMCA. Some of the things that we want to achieve together with this mural is really celebrating, um, important figures and themes from Columbus's history. We've seen that Turnaround South Columbus installed 11 markers recently, um, telling the history of black and brown civic leaders in Columbus. Those markers have gotten a ton of attention. People are coming down and visiting them. The youth are learning more about the great leaders of this community. And that's something we want to achieve with this mural as well. Particularly on the trails, uh, and certainly there's beautiful art in Uptown and Midtown, but there is not a ton of public art along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And we wanted to use, um, public art as a destination on the trail, uh, for people to come and linger and connect and spend time. And also give access to people, um, to public art. You know, driving to the museum or riding your bike to the museum, that may not be a possibility. But how do we take art and put it in places people are and in their neighborhoods? Probably the most important thing about this mural, uh, compared to some of the other ones I've worked on in the city, I think this is the most collaborative, community, uh, engagement process that we're gonna undertake. So we want this mural to really represent whatever the community wants it to be. And so I'll talk a little bit more about how that's gonna be achieved. And then, you know, ultimately, when people see this mural, we want them to know that they were a part of it. They, we want them to feel connected to it and maybe be inspired to do more community art in their neighborhoods. So the proposed wall it's gonna go on is the, uh, uh, the facade of the A.J. McClung YMCA. This again is right on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and along the Martin Luther King Jr. Trail, which is part of the Dragonfly Trail system. We will be doing that one center panel. The goal is to do the other two or three panels in the future, maybe as a continued collaborative effort with, uh, Martin Luther King Day of Celebration. The artists that we selected, it was so important for us to find an artist that understood the needs of our community and what we are trying to achieve with this mural. Ernell Martinez has done a ton of work throughout the U.S. He's from Belize, grew up in Philly and Detroit. But really, he has spent the last 15 years doing public art initiatives, um, in Philadelphia. And he understands how important, um, the community is in the process. He's really worked with a lot of black and brown communities. He believes how important art is in engaging, um, in conversations and dialogues. He's worked with youth, um, and I'm happy to, you know, send you links to some of his, uh, projects. But just some of the murals he's done, uh, John Coltrane, all of the next four slides you'll see are murals that he spent time in the community, talking to the families of these figures, talking to the community where they grew up, to really design the murals. The next one is Ed Bradley. Joe Frazier, this one actually was just done in 2020. This is, um, a, a good story. He, they worked directly with their family to really honor him and, and worked with the, um, boxers in the neighborhood that he still has. So we wanna do something similar. This is, this was ultimately our inspiration. This is, um, Dr. Sean White. He was a civic leader in, um, South Philadelphia. And, um, he did a lot of work in the, uh, the community and he died, he passed away, um, from a mental condition really early. And the community gathered together and created all these adjectives or words that described their experience with him. And so this is really what we envision our mural to sort of look like. The coolest thing about the mural you see in front of you and the other ones is they're actually small pieces of parchment cloth, which means, um, the community can physically paint pieces of the cloth and the artists will, uh, integrate them together and sew them and then it'll be, uh, like an adhesive on the, on the wall. And so that's what we plan to do with ours. So how will we do this? Basically, um, there's gonna be two phases and, uh, starting June 1st, first, we welcome all of you guys to join us. We'll have pretty much an all-day community engagement session, um, with, led by Ernell, the muralist. And really, we'll have food and, and things for people to paint, but they can also learn about, Ernell, they can learn about how to paint. It'll be an open day, open all-day type of event. But the most important thing is in the morning, um, Chris Bryant and Coach Peabody from the Y have allowed us to, um, use their YMCA summer camp kids and actually have the muralists teach a lesson and have them paint pieces of the, um, of the cloth that will eventually become the mural. In the evening, we hope that people come by after work or if we just catch people on the trails to come and give input, uh, on, on how they feel about Columbus, their community. We would love to have, uh, we are still working on what the portrait will be. We are gravitating towards A.J. McClung and, uh, we still need to communicate with his family and see if that's appropriate. But, um, that is something that, uh, Chris and, um, Coach Peabody from the Y really felt was the perfect portrait for their building. The second phase, uh, this is Ernell on the left that you'll see, uh, leading one of his community engagement sessions. But, um, the second phase, well, Ernell will go back to the studio, put the pieces together, and then we'll install the mural and have a celebration. We may do this in, in the fall or, um, in, uh, in January of 2022 for the MLK Day of Celebration. Again, this is, um, uh, this would not be possible without all of these partners. The Y allowing us to use their facade, providing input and inspiration throughout the process and, and really allowing us to go into their building, um, and, and talk to the people that they affect on a daily basis. Columbus 2025, the city, uh, like I said, Rob, um, and his team helping us really get to this point. And then, um, Ernell, who is the artist, has, um, really contributed a lot of the, uh, product because he's very interested in working with our community, uh, at a discounted rate. So if anybody has any questions, happy to take them.
Becca, do you have some times for Phase One on the June 1st? Yet, have they scheduled those yet?
It will likely be all day, like a nine to nine, probably. But once we have something formal, uh, we will send that out to the counselors. But, you know, after you guys are done with work, please swing by or if you have any time during, um, the afternoon, we'll be out there all day. The goal is to not create, um, this where, you know, you, it's an invite-only type of event. We want people who are just using the trail, people who live in the community, people who are artists throughout the region to come and drop by and, and provide input.
See no questions. Thank you very much for that update. Now we have special blessings for council. I'd like to ask Rabbi Beth Schwartz of Temple Israel of Columbus to come and, and, uh, bless our day and our meeting as we, uh, conduct the work of the city. Thank you, Rabbi Schwartz. There we go.
Good morning and, uh, thank you for inviting me once again. And yes, uh, it is a, it is a good time, anytime is a good time for blessings. But especially in the morning, as we see opportunities to accomplish and to create together. And so Holy One of Blessings, we thank you for the gift of life and beyond the gift of life, the gift of community. We thank you for the vision to see what can be when we come together. We thank you for the ability to understand that each and every one of us is created in your image, multifaceted, weaving together many, many threads into a rich tapestry of community. We thank you for the ability to create, to create art, as we just heard in our community, to create opportunity for all of our citizens and the opportunity to create friendships and bonds that hold us together and enable us to be resilient in the face of challenges. We thank you for all of the things that sustain us, friendship, sunny weather. We thank you for being a source of comfort and a source of strength, no matter how we approach you, no matter how we hear you. You bring us strength, you bring us comfort, you bring us curiosity to learn, to do, to be together, to make our community stronger for all of its citizens. We are so grateful. So many blessings. May we remember them as we start today and every day. We thank you, Holy One, for being with us. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Schwartz. And please extend, uh, our thanks to Temple Israel for sharing you with us. Thank you. At this time, we have a proclamation that, uh, Councilor House is gonna read for us regarding Motorcycle Safety Month.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could the, the Columbus Association of Motorcyclists please come up to the podium? Good morning, it's with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to read this proclamation. Whereas motorcycles are efficient vehicles that reduce fuel consumption, require less parking space, ease traffic congestion, and are becoming increasingly popular for commuting, tourism, and recreational purposes. And whereas motorcycles provide a unique vantage point from which to enjoy Georgia's natural, historical, and cultural resources, and motorcycle-based tourism contributes to the state economy. And whereas increased awareness and safe driving procedures by all vehicle operators can help ensure the safety and reduce injuries and fatalities to motorcyclists. Whereas it is especially important that all drivers in our community be aware of motorcycles on the highways and streets and recognize the need to share the road with these vulnerable vehicles. And whereas the Central Georgia Association of Motorcycles, or CAM, is greatly concerned about the safety of every person on our roadways. And whereas CAM is dedicated to aid injured motorcyclists and the families of deceased riders physically, spiritually, and financially to ease the burden for both the injured families. And whereas Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month is an opportunity for all street and highway users to unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout our community. Now therefore, B.H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilor House. Would any of you gentlemen like to, uh, say a few words?
On behalf of the Columbus Association of Motorcyclists, we thank you for partnering with us to continue to bring motorcycle awareness to people's attention. And we look forward to a long and productive partnership. God bless you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Sir, would you like to introduce the gentleman with you or let them introduce themselves?
I'm sorry, I am Matt Jones. I had the distinct privilege of being the chaplain for the Columbus Association of Motorcyclists. I would like to introduce our president, Mr. Scott Henderson of the Iron Cross Motorcycle Club, Mr. Steve Hodge of the Laizama Painted Rock Hog Chapter here in Columbus. And I'd also like to, Mr. Joey Rucker, the Second Officer of the Southern Cruisers Riding Club.
Thank y'all for being here. I'm on my way with your proclamations.
God bless you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Now on our agenda, we have a request for authorization for an audit. I'd like to invite our auditor, John Redmond, come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Good morning. Members of council. Several weeks ago, you may recall Miller Edwards from our public accounting firm of Malden and Jenkins reported at the council on the audit. And he noted that in several of the areas, particularly where there were constitutional officers, there was some weakness of controls. And following that, I had a request from Judge Dantonio of the probate court with some of the changes that have been made with the installation of the Odyssey court wear system and also the changes in their processes and the way it interacts with the online payment system. He had some concerns about the controls over those tasks, whether there were proper separation of duties. So he's asked that we come in and take a look at that for him. And at this time, I'd like to request authorization to perform such audit.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion to allow? Okay, a motion from Counselor Crabbe and a second from, I believe, Counselor Tucker. All in favor? All opposed? It passes. Thank you, Mr. Auditor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now we move into our city attorney's agenda. Mr. Fay, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And again, congratulations, Mr. City Manager, on that honorary degree. We have a fairly short business agenda. First item up, we need a vote on the zoning change at 1,018th Street going to Neighborhood Commercial.
Motion for Counselor Woodson, a second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor? All opposed? And it passes.
All right. Next item is the first reading zoning. This is the petition at 213 North Star Drive, going from Neighborhood Commercial to Single Family Residential Two. It's recommended for approval. Is the petitioner here on North, North Star Drive?
I don't see anyone.
I don't see any hands. Mr. Jones, do you know, have you heard from the petitioner?
Good morning. No, we have not heard from him this morning, so I'm not sure where he is.
Okay. Well, Counselor Tucker, this is your district. Normally, we would delay it if the petitioner's not here for a couple of weeks, but... Do you have any desire to delay that two weeks?
You could delay the first reading, is what he said. Oh, sorry.
No, we don't need to delay it. We, we don't need to delay it.
Okay. Well, Mr. Jones, we can leave it on for second reading in two weeks if you will try to notify the applicant again.
Any counselors have any questions on this particular item?
All right. Anybody else in the audience want to speak on the North Star petition? I don't see any hands from there. We'll bring that back in two weeks then on second reading. Next item is the first reading. This is the text change in the UDO. You already changed the alcohol code for a dog park operation in the Uptown and CRD zoning districts. It's up for any discussion or questions?
I don't see any questions.
Okay, don't see any hands. We'll bring that back in two weeks for a vote. The next two items I'm going to call up together. Item four is substantially revised nondiscrimination ordinance continued on first reading. I believe Counselor Garrett is going to ask for delay on that. And then item five, we've got a resolution declaring the intent of the council to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from discrimination. And we will let Counselor Garrett comment on those items first.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The substantially revised version has, there's a lot of thought and processes gone into it. But I am asking for a delay because we've had concerns from every aspect of the community and there's been some misinformation regarding the nondiscrimination ordinance that's been put out there that I want all the community to have time to comment on it. But to be clear, the resolution that I propose, I do put in a timetable because this ordinance was delayed last year. It's been delayed for a full year and I do have serious concerns that if we don't put some type of timetable, that study committees won't be done and that we won't get this passed. And this is a ordinance that protects everyone on the basis of merit, not on the basis of religion, not on the, you can't discriminate on the basis that someone is a veteran or gender orientation or the fact that they believe something differently than you do in religion. But so folks know, this is an ordinance that's been adopted in 12 other, other cities. Statesboro passed it the same night that we were looking at on first read. Because of the concerns that were raised by business owners, by even our, even folks within the city who had concerns about how the enforcement mechanism would work, I propose this resolution, which I'll, just so it's on the public record, the class, it basically reiterates what the city code already is. The city already has protections in place where it comes to city, city employees, city contractors, folks who do business with the city. This resolution would call for us to affirm those in the private sector, and there are still religious exceptions. So people who are concerned about the different possibilities that this may infringe on religious freedoms, don't have to be concerned because there are two exceptions. One of them in the, in the ordinance, which will, we will all discuss as a council and with the business community, with the religious community, with everyone who's a stakeholder. There are exemptions. One is for religious organizations and the other one is for organizations that already have a bona fide affirmative action plan in place. The classes that, I'll just read this from the resolution that are, are included, but it's not to be an all-inclusive ordinance necessarily. I think this protects everybody on the basis of they should be hired and given housing on merit alone. It states, "This council hereby affirms its commitment to prohibit all forms of discrimination which subject any person to differential treatment as a result of that person's race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, disability, marital status, familial status, or veteran status in areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations." In that resolution, I do ask that the council approve that we would put a date, that we would adopt an ordinance or, or not. I mean, this is not binding, a binding commitment that all the councils will necessarily vote for this in unanimy, but it does give us a deadline that we would at least vote on something by August 31st, 2021. The reason for that is because this has been delayed a year. I did have constituents, local constituents in my district and folks outside of, outside of my district who have reached out to me. And this is a very important, very important, it's very important. I'll say I'm the youngest counselor on here and I haven't had anyone who has complained to me from my generation, from people probably 45 and under. There's been a lot of misinformation out there that I've got a lot of emails where people are saying this could allow child sex predators into restrooms, that kind of thing. Well, the facts are, Atlanta has had this ordinance in, in actually a more, I would say a broader fashion than what we've got proposed and will work on the enforcement piece until August, has had this for 20 years now. And in 20 years, the only cases that have been brought have been regarding hiring practices. But when a corporation looks at relocating to Columbus, and this is not, you know, the main reason is because I believe this is the good thing to do. I'm a Christian myself and I believe this is the godly thing to do because the greatest commandment, as you said, is to love our neighbors ourselves. That's a compilation of all the commandments. So, you know, I can't discriminate against someone who works for me but who is not religious like I am, but because of my religion, I do feel compelled to bring this ordinance forward and this resolution, which would give us time to get community input. But outside of that, from a business perspective, we have three major corporations here in Columbus. All of them have been homegrown. One of them has recently been purchased and we've been blessed that most of those jobs have stayed here. But when corporations do look to relocate to Columbus, it may not be the end-all, be-all. But part of the reason this ordinance passed in Atlanta was to get the Super Bowl and to get other athletic events, and it did play a factor. It was one of the boxes that gets checked when you look at whether a corporation relocates. As I said, it's not the end-all, be-all. They look at tax breaks, they look at education, they look at a lot of other things. But this is something that is a, could be a very positive benefit to our city and I do not see where the true negative would come from because if we're supposed to love everyone as we love our neighbor, then we should be an inclusive city and we already are. We have not heard a lot of complaints regarding, issues regarding this ordinance. This is more of a statement of what our city RA stands for. And we are an open and inclusive city. We do have a very diverse community and I'd like our community to be recognized for that and for our citizens to have protections that are in place locally because we are one of only a handful of states that does not have statewide civil rights laws. There are less than five states that don't have civil rights laws at state level and Georgia's one of them. This puts us at the forefront and unfortunately, not too much at the forefront because 12 other cities have already done this ahead of us. But it gives us three solid months of deliberation. And I would ask that, you know, if there are counselors who vote against the, who vote against the resolution in the end, you respect their rights because no one here wants to discriminate. Everyone here who has talked to me and has concerns about whether or not they have to vote on in August has legitimate concerns, which do make sense and ones that we're going to take into consideration when we have these three months of study committee. So everyone on council, I believe, truly does believe in everyone having an equal opportunity. And anyone who does express concerns, I hope you'll respect their concerns because they have to do with business or with enforcement pieces, that type of thing, things that we do need to address. And we have until August 31st to do so and it could still be voted down where we have to go back to the drawing board. But I do want us to have a timetable and that's why I'm asking for approval of this resolution, so I'll move for its adoption.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? Just to clarify, if I may, where we go from here is we, I think the last meeting, Mayor, Mayor Henderson asked Gerald Mitchell with the Chamber of Commerce to form a working group, if you will, of those interested parties, local businesses, to come together and talk through the concerns and issues they have and to come, come back to council with a working document. Okay. And any counselor that wants to sit in those meetings is welcome to do so. Okay. Counselor Thomas.
Mayor Protem, that was my question was, so who takes up this now? It would be very easy for this entire issue just to sit there for the next three months and nobody, nobody do anything. I'm, I assume, and that may be the wrong thing to do, that the city attorney's office would be working with whatever group comes together. I would assume that Counselor Garrett would be part of that, but I don't know that. And I don't know if there's another department in Dr. Hughley's realm that would work on this, but I would like to know where we go from here so that it's not just happen-chance.
I agree. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you, Counselor Thomas, because I think that's what happened last time. We, we tabled it and then nobody picked up the mantle and ran, ran with it. And so a year later, the same thing came back to us that we had delayed. And so I, I, you know, I don't want to speak for the Chamber of Commerce, but I think that they have enough diversity within, within their group that they should maybe take the lead on this. But I, but I'd like to hear what Counselor Garrett says.
I, I did meet with the chamber president and I expressed how long I was planning on doing as a deadline and they thought it was an appropriate time span. And many of their concerns have already been addressed in what the mayor and the city attorney's office worked on this revised ordinance. But they are going to help take the lead and set up, you know, teams or Zoom meetings. I've also circulated among the IMA and trying to get it out in the community. That's why we did go ahead and keep it on First Street, even though my intention was to delay it with this resolution so that the public can have comment, can look at it, can participate in it. And with everyone knowing that we have a goal deadline of August 31st, this will move forward. I mean, I'll push it forward through myself personally that we have these meetings, but the chamber's aware of it. And I think they have every intention of working with us to come up with an ordinance that the majority or consensus not, I mean, in a compromise, neither side's completely happy. And I tell people, my clients say all the time in the law, somebody gives, somebody takes a little bit more. And that's what we're going to be working towards is a compromise and they do understand that and we are going to bring everybody to the table and they are going to help facilitate that.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Hughley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. To the question from Counselor Thomas and if it meets Counselor Garrett's approval and, and of course you, Mayor Protem, I would love to have our HR director read the hollow wheel because of her vast experience in human resources and affirmative action and fair treatment and all of the categories. I would love to have her to work with you during this period.
That's another great idea. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Counselor Thomas.
No.
Okay, Counselor Woodson.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor Isaiah Hughley. It sounds strange. But anyway, I was going to suggest the HR too, but I wanted to ask Counselor Garrett a question. During the meet, the emails that were going around within all of us, I had some concerns and I was wondering if the concerns and the comments that we were making throughout the conversation in the emails, are those going to be given to the Chamber of Commerce? What part does that play? play? I have more, I'm not ready. And my, and my second thing, I just want to make sure you understand very clearly. My concern is that I don't think it should be our clerk of council's responsibility to take these complaints. One, they're understaffed as it is. Two, they're still working in an audit that they had to complete. Three, we ourselves don't give them enough money. We limit what we give them to do their jobs. They would consider them to be hiring another person, and a person with legal matters. I think this needs to continue to be handled by two parties, and that is the city attorney's office and HR, because they are the professionals. They are the ones that know these issues. I am not in favor, and I think that, that line item needs to be readdressed, and putting that responsibility on our clerk of council. I wanted to make that be known publicly and on the records, and I wanted to see if these comments that we've been making is going to the Chamber of Commerce.
I believe they are. Mr. City Attorney will communicate that with them, and we can address, as a council, we can address the court's involvement once it comes back to us. But we can also communicate that to the Chamber, and Mr. Mitchell could address that as well.
You know, and I don't, I don't have a problem if they just get the complaint and then they forward it to the city attorney or to the HR. I don't have a problem with that. But them to be total responsible, collecting fees, deciding yes, no, that is not their job, and they are, no disrespect to the clerk of council and her staff, but they're not the professionals in that item. So why are we going to set them up for failure and make us look bad?
Okay, so Councillor Walker?
To answer your question, I mean, all of your concerns, we include, and I hope that you'll attend some of the meetings that the Chamber will hold. And I mean, obviously, anything that's been put in writing or said in these meetings, we conveyed, and we can certainly look at. But just to, I think the city attorney already addressed in an email this morning that the way it will work is not really going to be affecting the council, the clerk of council. And also, the only city which has had this for 20 years has, the city of Atlanta that does do it through the court, has only seen a handful of complaints ever filed and on an annual basis. They've never had any more than five, and it hasn't been a point in time. So it's, hasn't been a burden on Atlanta, which is substantially larger. But we can certainly revisit and take into consideration the clerk's, clerk's concerns, your concerns, anyone in the community's concerns. That's what we have this three-month period for.
And, and the thing is, you know, thank God, they haven't had any problems, but who's not to say that we will? You know, you never know. And to put this type of responsibility on a department that's not experienced, we're setting ourselves up for failure. I just think, and our city attorney has the ability and the authorization that if he can't handle the cases, he can hire another attorney. There's no reason for our clerk of council. Only thing they should be doing is getting the information and passing it on and keeping track of who has it, and that's it. Nothing else.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we have three months to address. The only thing we are voting on today is that we're going to work on this for three months on the enforcement side, which, that's included in the enforcement side. The only thing we're voting on today is that we all believe everyone deserves a right to an equal opportunity in this community.
And I don't have a problem with that. My biggest concern is our clerk of council.
And just to follow up on that, whether, whether complaints are filed with a clerk or our office or human resources, or in some cities, they go straight to Recorder's Court. But no matter where it is, there's going to be a fee paid and records kept. And if it's an office like our office, we would immediately forward it to the committee that council appoints or a special mediator. So, but that can all be discussed and worked out in the next couple of months.
Well, did they all have that discussion? I want to know. You can text me, Garrett, because I will be there to defend our council, clerk of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Woodson. The, as a member of the Recorder's Court Committee, I would hope that we do not involve them in this type ordinance, because they have an overwhelming caseload, and they are already backlog. And I think this would, this would impede their ability to reach the cases that affect the quality of life of the citizens already. So I would hope that we would not involve them in this. I do not see any more comments, so are you ready to vote on the ordinance? All in favor, say aye.
We need to get a motion to delay.
I thought Councillor Walker had... Okay, a second from Councillor Tucker.
We're going to vote on item four to delay, right?
Yes, sir. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
And did we get an official vote on the resolution, number five?
Well, that's what we were, yeah, we were...
Okay.
So we took, we took them out of order, right? Okay. There is a motion and a second. Okay. So all in favor of the resolution to delay, say aye. All opposed? I mean, to pass, to pass the resolution, I apologize. All in favor to have passed the resolution, say aye. All opposed? Okay, unanimous.
All right, then that matter will be brought back probably in August with some more revisions for further discussion. And then Mayor Protim, we need an executive session on matters of litigation and personnel as soon as we can, because we've got some other folks that are going to be joining us. That's all we have.
Will you remind me at the end of the meeting?
Will do.
Thank you, sir. Now we go into the public agenda. First on the list in the public agenda is Ms. Katie Hedges. Please join us at the microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some packets of information. I'm not sure how I should pass those out.
Ms. Hedges, let me say, there's a five-minute time period on the public agenda.
Yes, sir.
Once you introduce yourself and give us your address, then I will start the clock.
Sure.
And I think you received some communication from Mayor Henderson regarding councils. We do not have the ability to intercede or interfere with, with NeighborWorks.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, you may, you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Katie Hedges. My address is 8155 Mahdi Lane. That's 31004 in Twin Chapel. So last week, I sent each of you details and documents regarding the issue that we're having with NeighborWorks Columbus. To summarize the issue for the public, my husband and I purchased our home from NeighborWorks in January of 2014. Within six months, we began having problems with the wall tile in our hall bathroom, and we addressed the concerns of mold and mildew with NeighborWorks, all within our one-year warranty timeframe. Their contractor came out and essentially put a Band-Aid on the problem instead of actually fixing it. And so unfortunately, it continued to grow and grow until it just became too severe to ignore. In 2019, we reached out to NeighborWorks again. We reached out to NeighborWorks again in hope of qualifying for a loan or a grant of some sort, and we were approved for the state chip loan, which is a forgivable renovation loan. NeighborWorks sent three inspectors to our home, as using the loan would actually require us to bring every area of our house up to code. So it was during that time that they discovered lead tile in our bathrooms. My husband and I signed a contract with NeighborWorks for them to completely gut our bathroom, among a few other things. And after signing the contract, we reallocated our personal finances in the good legal faith that NeighborWorks is going to stand by the contract. Two months later, NeighborWorks called and backed out of the contract, saying that we were not approved due to an affordability period. Because NeighborWorks had already spent federal dollars on our home prior to us purchasing it, we could not use additional funding at our address for 15 years. Rather than to do the right thing and still complete the work, because we had signed the contract, NeighborWorks just left us with the problems. It wasn't until further investigation by the city's Community Reinvestment Department that it was confirmed that NeighborWorks was actually responsible for putting the lead tile in our bathrooms when they renovated it prior to our purchasing it. So the federal dollars that were used initially is what put the lead tile in our bathrooms, and that is, the exact funding is now what is apparently preventing us from being able to remove it. The Community Reinvestment Department began an audit on NeighborWorks in the fall of 2020. During that time, NeighborWorks actually called me back and said, "Hi, we've come into additional funding, and we can actually do the work." So we began the scheduling process. And I actually have a voicemail from Lance Renfro of NeighborWorks that I would like to play for you at the end if somebody would like to ask that question. I tried multiple times to return Lance's call, only to find out that NeighborWorks had dropped us again. And unfortunately, NeighborWorks is refusing to speak to me. Actually, I just don't have another option but to come here. Despite this issue, I am still very much in favor and support of NeighborWorks, because they were such a blessing to our family seven years ago. While NeighborWorks is a separate entity from the city, they are an organization that uses our community's tax dollars through federal funding. And in this case, their organization is responsible for installing a dangerous lead-based tile in my bathrooms with your tax dollars and with mine. As you can see, my husband and I have five children here, and these are the people who I'm fighting for. As I understand, Ms. Kathy Williams, the CEO of NeighborWorks, is in the audience today. Ms. Williams, if you're here, I would like for you to look at these precious children and consider their health and do the right thing. Complete the entire scope of work that you initially committed to over one year ago, and specifically remove and replace all the lead tile from our home. I'm not holding a grudge against you or anyone at NeighborWorks. I simply want the problem fixed. To the members of city council, and to all of you in a position of influence, what I ask for you today is your support. You can stand behind me and voice your support of our family to Mrs. Williams and NeighborWorks today. Proverbs 31:8-9 speaks to those who are in a position of influence and power, reminding them that they have a responsibility that comes with their position of power.
Open your mouth for the, for the people who cannot speak, for the rights of all the unfortunate. Open your mouth, judge righteously, and defend the rights of the poor and needy.
My five children cannot speak for themselves, and NeighborWorks has put our family in a bind with all of this. I'm a stay-at-home mom, and my husband is the breadwinner of our family, and we don't have an extra $12,000 to fix what NeighborWorks should be responsible for fixing. I'm asking for each of you to stand up and defend us. I would appreciate questions from the council, specifically to play the voicemail that I have, and also about packet, the packet of information that I've given you. But most of all, I would appreciate a willing response from Mrs. Williams to complete all of the work on our home as stated in our contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedges. You're about four seconds left. That's very, very timely. If you would like to, if you'd like to come back at the end of the meeting, you would have an additional three minutes to comment. I believe Councillor Tucker would like to talk to you.
I would like for the voicemail to be played that she is referring to. Could you play the voicemail?
Sure. This was, the voicemail is from October 26th at 10:48.
Hey, Katie, this is Lance Renfro. I just wanted to touch base with you about the work that we were, we are scheduling. Hoping that Monday, November 16th, as a start date, would work for you. It's looking like that's about three weeks from now. So if you would, please give me a call back at your earliest convenience, and let me know if that works. Thank you so much. Bye.
Councillor Woodson?
I think Tucker still wanted to finish. Go ahead, Tucker.
And after that voicemail, have you received any phone calls?
No, I have tried to contact them a handful of times. I called, I sent text messages, I even sent a letter, certified mail, that was received, but I have not been able to schedule that work to be done.
Did you have an attorney working with you?
I have sought some legal advice from an attorney here in Columbus, but I, I'm really trying not to go the route of a suit. I really do not want to do that for a couple of reasons, but one of which is, NeighborWorks is a great organization, and, you know, I want to support their efforts, and they have been such a blessing for our family, you know, in the past. And so I don't want to go that route. So I'm hoping that, being here today and just having some support from leaders in the city can maybe help encourage NeighborWorks to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Ma'am, just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming forward and bringing it to our attention, even though we have no control. It's important for us to know, because as city council members in the city, we're trying to have a better quality life for everyone. I'm not sure what happened, where the ball fall, but I'm pretty sure that Neighborhood Works has a good reputation. They have great leadership, that after this, I'm hoping that, actually, I'm praying, that they will come to the table with you and resolve this problem. It's important that we know, because we don't want this to continue going, and people feel that they're stuck, that there's nowhere they can go, how they're not going to voice their point. And since we support Neighborhood Works, we want to know what they're doing, you know, for our citizens. And thank you for acknowledging the good work that they do, because they do an amazing job and give a lot of opportunities. Unfortunately, you know, things happen, and unfortunately, you were the, the person that received that. But Neighborhood Works is a good organization. I'm pretty sure that they will come through and help you, because children are precious, and children are our future. And we thank you for coming here and not discriminating against them or anything, just letting them know you have a concern and you just want help. That's it. You're not after any additional funds, you're not after any lawsuits, nothing. You just want the problem fixed, so that your children are in a environment of, of well-being and quality of life. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Woodson. Thank you, Ms. Hedges.
Thank you.
Next on the public agenda is Ms. Teresa Alamein. Does anybody, I don't see her. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's agenda. Dr. Hughley?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. First, I've got Housing Authority... Thank you. Housing Authority Riverwalk Encroachment Agreement, requesting council authorization to execute an encroachment agreement for the construction of the two walkways and necessary retaining walls for the purpose of pedestrian access from Housing Authority property to the Riverwalk. And so we're asking your approval.
We've got, she's on her way. We have a motion to approve from Councillor Woodson, and a second from Councillor House. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes?
Got, street acceptance, Midland Commons Boulevard, Ray Wright Way, Thompson Way... Got street acceptance, Midland Commons Boulevard, Ray Wright Way, Thompson Way, a portion of Kaloka's Lane located in Midland Commons, asking your approval to accept.
Motion from Counsel House, second from Counsel Tucker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes.
I do see Chief Salas Carver in the audience, but we've got Columbus Fire EMS Strategic Plan and Standard of Cover, Standards of Cover, Community Risk Assessment Update. We're asking your approval to, for these, to approve this document.
Got a motion from Counsel Tucker to approve, second from Counsel Woodson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it passes. Congratulations, Chief. Appreciate all the hard work. Enjoyed visiting with your guys the other day at the staff meeting. Thank you for hosting me there, taking care of me, letting me not say anything wrong and keep me out of trouble. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. And I've got Housing Authority request for release of funding. There's no obligation from the city here, but this is something that's required, but requesting to execute the request for release of funds with the Housing Authority, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to gain access to $10,075,000 for the construction of Warm Springs Senior Village located at 4219 Warm Springs Road. We're asking your approval.
Okay. I have an approval motion from Counsel Tucker, a second from Counsel House. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Got purchases, I've got Pool Chemicals asking your approval of the annual contract. It's an estimated annual contract of $158,370.
A through G. There's H from there. Okay, there's a motion to approve items A through H, seconded from Counsel Woodson, seconded by Counsel Tucker. All in favor, say aye. And, Mr. City Manager, if you would, read those out for the record, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I've got bus route signs and poles for Metra, got steel trash receptacles for Metra, on-call low voltage wiring services for the city government, bus advertising, annual contract where we would get a portion of revenue for Metra, got service agreement amendment for the automated victim notification system, got automatic license plate recognition, security camera system, got Ford Expedition for Information Technology for transporting and servicing departments throughout the government. Those are the purchases. Other than that, Mayor Protem, I've got some updates. I've got a CARES Act update that will be brought to us by Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. And Stapp was telling me that item E was pulled, and I don't think I addressed that, and you didn't either. I think initially she said A through G, and, but there's A through H, and so there was one item that we had earlier as item E, but it was pulled, and you did not address that.
Okay, all right. Well, I think administratively, he pulled it, so I think we're good. Ms. Hodge?
Good morning, Mayor Protem and Council. This is just an update on the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan update, just to remind everyone the process that we've gone through in the past and what the American Rescue Plan will have moving forward. From a business license occupation tax filing, there was a payment deferral that Council approved last year and this year in 2020. That extension was from April 1 through June 1 of 2020 by ordinance 020-10. And then Council also in 2021 deferred business and occupation tax filing and payment from April 1 to June 1 of 2021 in order to assist those businesses with their filing due to the pandemic. The CARES Act funding, which came into law in March 27 of 2020, that was over $2 trillion in economic relief. We were notified from the state of Georgia, June 29 of 2020. These funds flowed through the state of Georgia. Our Phase 1 expenditure deadline was September 1 of 2020, and Phase 1, we did receive $10,248,000 that we used to provide teleworking laptops, public safety payroll, and personal protective equipment and facility modifications in response to COVID-19. Phase 2 and Phase 3 funding, which we anticipated to be an estimated $24 million, as we were moving through Phase 1, we started working towards the funding that we expected for Phase 2. So we initiated a business grant program to target three specific categories: medical and health, community assistance, and small business and art organizations. And those were things like for medical and health, testing sites, personal protective equipment, sanitation, retrofitting spaces for those medical and health facilities. We also looked at community assistance to provide food and utility assistance, rental and mortgage assistance, and funeral assistance. The small business arts component included those same things for sanitation, retrofitting your office space for social distancing, and teleworking capabilities. At that time, the city hired Media Marketing &amp; More in July of 2020 to oversee that grant program for the city, and at that time, the Columbus CARES COVID Relief Fund was launched. Media Marketing &amp; More issued a media advisory in August of 2020. They held a press conference on August 10. They did nine public webinars, small group meetings through Zoom, speaking engagements, a public tutorial that was on YouTube. They did e-newsletters to over 2,600 businesses within our area. Their business eligibility included, must be in business by December of 2019. They had to be obviously headquartered in Muskogee County and locally owned and operated, current on their business license or their 501(c)(3) status, current on all their taxes, and serving Muskogee County residents. That portal was open August 10 of 2020. Was a very short time, turnaround time for applications to be due. They received 467 applications totaling $7.2 million. Eligible applications, after they reviewed those, came in at approximately $3.4 million. So there were things submitted that were not considered eligible. And at that time, we received notice from the state of Georgia on October 14 that those Phase 2 and Phase 3 funds that we had intended for that business grant program were being used to shore up the Unemployment Insurance Trust Fund, and that we would not receive those funds.
Ms. Hodge, excuse me. Counsel Woodson?
Yes, Ms. Hodge, I had a question. On the nonprofit, if they weren't selected, was the letter sent out? And the reason I'm asking is because I did sat down with a nonprofit earlier this week getting educated on the program, and they submitted, they submitted one, and they have not heard from it. So I was just wondering, what was the timeframe for them to hear if they were approved or not approved?
They would have not received any kind of notice that they would have, they were approved. They would have received notice from Media Marketing &amp; More as they were reviewing their application if they had any questions. But once we received a notice that the funding was not coming to the city of Columbus, Media Marketing &amp; More did advise all of those organizations that the funding was not available through a notice.
Well, what I'll do is get with you later after council and let you know of that nonprofit. Can you follow up on that, please?
Absolutely.
Because they're, you know, they're excited, and they're still waiting, and in the service that they provide, they have people waiting. And so I hate for people to still think they're getting something and they're not. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Another funding that we received through the CARES Act is related to our CDBG program. We received two allocations through the CARES Act. That was in two allocations. One was $981,189. Out of that, one of the programs that was initiated through that CV funding was partnering with the Chamber and Startup Columbus to do a Small Business Economic Relief Grant Program. That is $112,000. That started May 1. Director Scott will follow me in his presentation and give more detail on this particular program. The CV III was our second allocation, was 1.1 million, and they're, right now, just finished up the competitive application process for what programs will be, where those funds will be used and for what programs. So he'll talk more about that process as well. On the American Rescue Plan, which was March of 2021, was signed into law March 11 of 2021, 1.9 trillion in economic relief related to the pandemic, $362 billion in direct aid, not through the state, for state and local governments. And I have, this slide needs to be changed. We did receive the guidance yesterday. Late yesterday afternoon, we received 151-page guidance on that, and so we are currently reviewing that guidance. We will receive two allocations, one for the county and one for the city as a consolidated government. The total of that is $78,482,038.
And just to sort of add to that, I actually was going to give that allocation amount too. So the Deputy City Manager has provided that information, but where we currently are in that process is that the application for the city allocation has been submitted, and it is currently pending. We are corresponding with the Department of Treasury right now regarding the county allocation, and we are just waiting additional guidance on that before we're able to finalize the submission of that particular application. But we're on track, and we're on our way.
So, so if, ma'am, Mayor Protem, just, so the council will know, how much is the county allocation? How much is the city allocation? And which did you apply for first? And, and you've applied to receive that money, and will it be 100% of that amount, 50%? What will it be?
Mm-hmm.
So if you could kind of...
Absolutely. So the city allocation was $40,456,205. The county allocation, and this is directly from the Treasury, so these are no longer estimates. These are numbers that were published by the Department of Treasury. The county allocation is $38,025,833, for again, the combined total of $78,482,038. And we do anticipate, according to the law, that we will receive 50% of these allocations once the applications have been finalized, with the second half being received in one year.
Excuse me, Madam Finance Director, Counsel Woodson.
I'm sorry, I'm busy this morning. I apologize. Pam, I have a question for you on the partners with the Chamber Set Up Columbus to implement a Small Business Economic Relief Grant. On that, I don't know if my question will relate to that, but I was wondering, I understand there are some small mom-and-pop shops that only have one employee or two employed, and, you know, they even had to let go their one and two employees because they didn't have any funding. Is there any grants or programs for that type of business? I mean, these are, you know, businesses, people put their whole livelihood, they only have one or two employees, but they've had to let go those one and two employees. They're open and they're running the business, just a mom and pop, you know, trying to make it through. And in one place I was, I asked them, I said, "Well, didn't you apply?" He said, "No, I have to have at least 25 or 10 employees." So I was wondering, have we addressed those small and pop businesses? What can they do? I'm just curious.
And I'm going to defer your question to Director Scott. He's going to follow this presentation with the specifics of that program, which I think will answer your question.
Okay, thank you very much.
But I want to just be clear, Deputy City Manager, when we did the first round of CARES Act funding, we didn't have a specific number of employees.
Can't hear you.
It was for mom and pop or anyone else who wanted to apply.
There was a minimum number of employees, and I will look that number up. I'm not, I don't believe the one or two would have qualified in the CARES Act funding, but it would qualify under Rob's program. But I'll look up that number of minimum employees that they had to have.
Sure. Counselor Tucker?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm reading the last slide where it say use of funds, and I don't see support immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, and I guess that will kind of refer to what Counselor Woodson is saying, because the economic relief that we're getting with ARP is different than the CARES Act. So it is to respond to these economic, you know, issues that we've had in our community and actually help rebuild a stronger community with these ARP funds. So is it possible, one, for us to bring up the $3.4 million that the eligible applicants from the CARES Act that did not receive those funds last time with these ARP funds, and also add individuals such as the business owner that Mimi was referencing that doesn't have 25, you know, employees, the real mom and pops that truly need that economic relief to provide equity, you know, amongst all the business owners?
Well, and Mayor Protem, and to Counselor Tucker, let me just say that we are going to, once we get more information from Treasury, once we know that we've got this money secured in our bank account, we do, I know the mayor has some things that he would like to see done, and I'm sure he'll be sharing those with you, but a couple of things that, I mean, you're going to have to make decisions on in those coming days. As you heard the Deputy City Manager say, that we anticipated funding, there were 467 agencies, businesses that applied, and we anticipated approving $3.4 million for those businesses that were approved, or we anticipated we would approve. We identified who would be approved, and that amount was $3.4 million, and then the money got pulled. And so what we anticipate, that we will come back and ask you for decisions on, is with this ARP money, I anticipate the money being flexible enough that we can come to you and say, the money got pulled in the CARES Act, and we didn't get to fund these businesses that were identified for approval to the tune of $3.4 million. Do you want us to proceed in making those awards of that $3.4 million to that 467 or so small businesses? That's the first question. And then a second question, those applications were due, I believe, like August, whatever. Do you want a, a Phase 2, that was Phase 1, a Phase 2 from that date when that... a phase two from that date when that ended to the current date? And then we would allow another round of applications for those who continue to go through the challenges of staying in business during this pandemic or taking care of those things? Do you want a phase two? And, and so then we will be guided at that time by your direction related to the phase one, the phase two. And then the mayor may have a specific program or effort that he wants to roll out and share with you. So those are the things that we will be coming back to you for direction, for decisions from this council, so that we can move forward and hopefully move back to, to some level of normalcy.
And also to respond to Counselor Woodson's question, that first round of funding was 100 employees or less. So they would have qualified just as one or two employees under that first program.
Yeah, and that, that was the point I wanted to clear up. So if you were, if you recall, you know, I kept, I was sitting here saying to those watching by television, you know, if you don't, if you are mom and pop, barber shop, hair salon, any of those, you need to apply. And, and, and I, and so small businesses with one to two or three employees were able to because they had to buy supplies and do things to be able to try and stay in business during that period. And so many of those are in that 467 that I'm calling, referring to as a phase one. And so with this, these ARP dollars, let's see, if we can come back and address whether you want to move forward? And then is there a phase two? And so we will be coming back to you.
Counselor Tucker.
I would say this in reference to those small, smaller mom and pops. A lot of people don't have the capacity to even, to even advocate for themselves. And that's why we need community navigators to help these small mom and pops. And I know that Rob is doing an excellent job with Startup Columbus with the program that they just launched. But we need more of that because some of these individuals don't know the first steps of actually applying for a grant. And they feel like it's above their head, and that's the reason why they don't apply for it. But we do need to, to provide assistance for everybody. It needs to be something that we provide for our citizens because all of us need to recover. It needs to be equitable, you know, across the board, whatever, you know, individuals that are applying. Because like Mimi is saying, you know, that, that individual that have, you know, like onesie, twosie employees, they're having problems and they just need some help. It's, it's almost like, you know, you just, you just get into a serious stressful. We've been in a stressful time during this pandemic. And your mental capacity just shuts down. And I'm saying this as a veteran because I know that when you, when you're stressed, your brain, your brain just stops. So I, I know that we need to just do a little more for our community to, to ensure that they bounce back from this pandemic as well.
Counselor Woodson.
Thank you, Pam, I appreciate that information. And I tend to agree with my colleague. Because this business, they just said, well, it's for people that have business. Because I asked, I say, hey, did you get some grant money? And they said to me, oh, no, that's for people that have 25 or more employees. So I guess it's true, as you said, Counselor Tucker. Everyone don't understand, don't have the capability. I know we can't do everything, and we try to do everything. But I think us council members and our constituents, if we know of a facility or a business, I think we should get with Rob or someone and say, hey, we need to get information to this business so that they know they do qualify. I'm not sure what happened, but I'm going back to the business and ask them, where did you get that from? You know, what did you do? Because you did have an opportunity and you lost that opportunity. Hopefully, depending on what the mayor will bring back and if he are, we would be able to assist you, you'll have a second chance. But in the future, if you hear things, don't take it from street talk. Go straight to sources and verify what you hear so that you don't miss out on opportunities like this. And for mom and pops, you're right, you feel intimidated. You know, even when we go talk to them, they feel intimidated. I have to joke and laugh and act silly for them to feel comfortable to express what they're really going through and feel. So I think each one of us as a council member, we need to look in our district, who's struggling, the mom and pops in our district that are struggling, and see how we can help our staff to help them so that they can hopefully go on the second round, if there's a second round.
And...
Thank you.
And just one final thing for me. You know, we had a forum, and we had a great turnout where we were able to share with small business from the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce's perspective. They were on the panel, the mayor, the city officials, the deputy city manager, and Rob Scott with Community Reinvestment. And we shared a lot of information. And, and some of them said that they didn't, they were not aware. And of course, I know that we kept repeating it at City Council and, and then sometimes we rely on the media. And so we asked a question, as you know, during that forum, how can we best get information to you? And some of them said social media, Facebook, so forth, so on. And so I have asked the City Managers' Millennial Roundtable to work on a, a program that would be an abbreviated, they would recapture the highlights from City Council. And, and they will do it on CCGTV, the City Managers' Millennial Roundtable. They will do it on Facebook, and they will do a podcast. And so they are working on that to help better communicate with those who don't watch CCGTV, may not catch the news, but they scroll on social media. And so we're going to use those young millennials to, to assist us with communicating and getting work out throughout this community.
Counselor Tucker.
I promise this is my last comment. I did like Sharika's day, Sharika Day's response to that question. And she made a comment about getting on to the, the business segment on the news. It, it, people do still watch, you know, the news, whether it's WTVM or WRBL. But putting that through our, our local news, and also I, I still get the paper, the Ledger, and, and maybe even the Courier. That way we're going to many demographics and not just social media. Because some people don't do social media, so we can't depend on just one form. Or, you know, we, we need to do multiple, a wide range. So I, I would suggest that we use our, our local media as well, news media.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I know that Rob Scott with Community Reinvestment is going to be coming to update you on the grant program that the Deputy City Manager just mentioned to you.
Okay, Director Scott.
Good morning, and thank you so much for having me here today. I am here to talk about the Small Business Economic Relief Grant Program that's being administered through my office, the Community Reinvestment Department. Columbus Consolidated Government's Community Reinvestment Department has partnered with Startup Columbus and the Greater Columbus Chamber of Commerce to develop and administer an economic development grant program. The grant program will assist small businesses in Columbus, Columbus that have been negatively affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The funding for this grant program is provided under the federal stimulus package. As we commonly recall it, the CARES Act. And it is administered through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. And it is a spin-off of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Let me talk a little bit about the project. The project has up to 112,000 dollars available for the initial funding opportunity. The applications will be accepted from May 1st on a rolling basis until all available funds are committed to eligible businesses and expenses. And I'm going to briefly talk about program eligibility because that was something that was a hot topic during the previous presentation by Deputy City Manager Hodge. So who's eligible to be a part of this program? It is for for-profit businesses that are not publicly traded, partially owned by a hedge fund or a corporate-owned franchise. They have to have a current Muskogee County business license. And those for-profit businesses must be in good standing with the city of Columbus. These businesses must have a physical presence of an organization or business in a building or other structure. And it's for businesses who can demonstrate ongoing business operations since March 1st, 2019. And these businesses need not, should not be in bankruptcy. They should be current with all local, state, and federal taxes, fees, and be in compliance with the city's business obligations, including but not limited to licensure, insurance, tax obligations, and zoning land use requirements. These businesses that will potentially be awarded the funding must agree to retain or create a job for a lower moderate income employee for at least one year as a result of the award. The businesses must certify on the application that use of the grant funds will only be used to reimburse authorized business expenses. And these are for for-profit businesses that are operational at the time the grant is awarded. The application is currently available online. You can go to startupcolga.com. Or you can go to the city's website in the Community Reinvestment Department. It is listed as there as well. Some of the things that the businesses need to keep in mind as they apply for these funding is that we're going to need a completed W-9 form, e-verified numbers, valid state or issued photo ID for the business owner, copy of the business license, summaries of the COVID-19 expenses that we would reimburse, along with the billing, the invoice, and the proof of payment. And if they're in the case of multiple owners for a single business entity, we would just look for a business operating agreement. So for contact information, if you, if there are you yourselves or if there are small businesses that are watching the broadcast, if you need more information or would like specific information on how your business can get connected to this amazing opportunity that we're presenting, you can email me, scott.robert@columbusga.org. You can go to the Community Reinvestment page on the city's website. And you can also go to startupcolga.com and email Ben McMinn, the Executive Director of Startup, at ben@startupcolga.com.
Excuse me, Director.
Yes.
Counselor House.
Thank you. Director Scott, just one question, make sure, I'm straight on the numbers. Is this the program where you have a total of 981,189 to administer, and a business can apply for up to 112,000 dollars for each business? Is that correct?
That is not, let me just clarify that for you, Counselor House. So in the first appropriation of CDBG CV funding, the, the city was awarded 981,189 dollars. Of the 981,189, roughly 10% of it was allocated towards this project. So this project seeks to serve businesses with up to $4,000 of reimbursable expenses. And we, our target number is about 28 businesses that we hope to have awarded by the end of the funding expenditure.
So the total for the program was 112?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Director Scott, I have a question. It talked about a minimum of one, creating a job for one employee for 12 months. What happens if that doesn't work out? If they just run nine months? Or if, if they do not meet the standard that you've set, that they've agreed to in the program?
If they do not meet the standard, there is no negative penalty that would be imposed upon the business. We need, we, we're just here to encourage them. And how it would affect us is, once we do our annual reporting, which is called the CAPR, that percentage of successful businesses who have retained or created that one low-income job, it'll affect that number in reporting for the city. But it won't have a direct impact on the businesses who are awarded.
Okay. Excuse me, Counselor Tucker.
Thank you, Director Scott. Is it, I'm not sure if you can tell this information, but about how many people have applied thus far? And also, could you, could you state some of the eligible reimbursement expenses?
Absolutely, thank you so much for that question. Approximately 67 businesses have applied for the funding between May 1st and May 11th. So that's a very positive sign, averaging about six businesses actually starting the process per day. We appreciate that. In terms of the other question, what are some of the eligible expenses? So there are three primary ways that a business could seek reimbursement. And those are for payroll or salaries for those that are employed by them, rent, mortgage assistance, so if they're proof of that they pay monies for their rent to keep their businesses open, as well as utility expenditures. So it's one of those three categories of eligible reimbursement. These are not things that I just randomly picked out of the air. These things are guided by federal regulation. And, and to ease the process, this is, this was the best approach that the city took. Thank you, ma'am.
No further questions at this time.
Before you leave the podium, and, and this was not a part of your presentation, but I'd love for you to mention, just as a reminder to some of our citizens, some of the other, some other funding that's available, such as funeral assistance for COVID, rental utility assistance. Would you just mention those things?
Absolutely, thank you, City Manager, for that opportunity to talk about some of the things that are here for our citizens to help provide some support and some sort of relief after, as we come out of this pandemic. The first thing that I want to talk about is the Emergency Broadband Benefit. The Emergency Broadband Benefit seeks to help those households who I believe is under, under 135% of the area median income. They are eligible to receive a credit towards their internet usage or their broadband service. The credit is $50 per month. It is not in, for everything. There is, it is term-based. Unfortunately, I do not have the details of the length of the term. However, I do have information on the opportunity. So if there's anyone who is looking for emergency broadband relief, you can reach out to your local service providers beginning tomorrow. I believe the program starts tomorrow. So you can reach out to that. Yesterday, we received a call from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs about the Georgia Rental Assistance. I have come to this body and been on, on this stage to talk about the 550-some-odd million dollars that the state has been awarded for rental assistance for both landlords and for tenants. And they are excited about how things are looking for Columbus. And sometime this fall, we are working towards actually bringing the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to Columbus to, as a way of providing direct frontline assistance to members of our community who might need this assistance. So those are a couple of the things, Mr. City Manager, that... So those are a couple of the things, Mr. City Manager, that we know about, and we're working towards creating a space to notify everyone and keep them posted about those amazing things.
So did you mention the funeral?
That one I'm not too sure about, sir, so I can't speak to it.
And I guess I'm just, you know, though we are not administering those dollars, I think it's important for our citizens to know that if you've had a family member to pass away due to COVID, there's, I think it's up to $9,000 for funeral assistance, and I just hate for our people because they don't know, haven't heard about it, and we fail to remind them or mention it to them, though it's not a city, we don't have the funding, and you don't go through the city to do it, to get those dollars, but those dollars are out there and available. And so if you don't watch the news and follow these things, you're going to miss out on a lot, you know? And so, so please know that the broadband benefit, the funeral COVID benefit, the rental utility assistance benefit, and if there are others that we know about, we will mention them here so that people will at least be able to go and do their research and start looking for that, those dollars. If there are no other questions, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Woodson has a question.
Mr. Scott, I have a question for you. And Dr. Isaiah, I want to talk a little bit about the funeral one because it was brought to my attention. To our constituents, they would have to go on FEMA's website. Funeral homes can't do it for you. It has to be yourself personally, and it has to be the passing due to COVID. And they will give up to $9,000, but it cannot be assisted by a funeral home. The person has to go into the website and just search funeral assistance is what it is, and then it pops up, and it gives you an application, and it asks you certain questions, and it could go up to $9,000. I know because it was brought to my attention, and unfortunately, my mom did not pass from that, but I did put it on my Facebook, and I did tell some people. But it clearly says in there, it cannot be, a funeral facility cannot apply for you. It has to be the family.
Thank you. And with that...
And secondly, wait a minute, one moment. Scott, by any chance, do you know, or can you get back with me later, about how many Latino businesses applied for your program?
So far to date, 67 have applied.
Yes, but do you know how many of those 67 are Latino businesses?
Latino?
No, but one of the questions that we do ask in the application, because we thought it would be important for us to collect enough information to provide to you on who we were serving, we did ask the MWBE question. So at the end of the award, we will be able to come back to tell you how many minority, how many women business-owned enterprises have been become recipients of the funding.
Okay. And Dr. Isaiah, maybe your group could look into how we can facilitate the Latino community. I sent a couple texts to some people, and they said, "Look, we need to do better. Our Latino businesses are not taking advantage of any of these fundings or anything that's going on." So maybe we could talk a little bit more about it later, and maybe we can get some stuff translated, and maybe our legislative group can go out in the community, introduce themselves, and, you know, get partners of them, or maybe we can get CSU Latino students to go out there and help. Right now, I'm sitting here going, "Oh, my God," because the two businesses that told me they didn't qualify for because they didn't have 25% was Latino businesses.
Okay, sure.
And all Latino businesses are not run by Latinos. There's a couple Mexican restaurants that are owned by Koreans and other individuals, but there are a lot of Latino-Latino businesses that they are not. I can tell you, listening to today and listening to the two that approached me, I can tell you, that's a market we've not touched.
Sure.
And I just want to clarify, and it isn't because they're undocumented. I think it's just a fear that they don't know what's going on and who to ask. I think that's what it is mostly. It's not that because, "Oh, they're undocumented, their businesses." It's not that. It's just that they're afraid. They don't feel comfortable. They don't have no trust because of everything that's going on to be able to seek out and ask questions. And I apologize to my community because I should do a better job, and after today, I plan on doing a better job with it. But I asked my colleagues, and I asked you, City Manager, and Rob, to help me put something together, and let's go out to that community, and let's really help them, let them feel like they're a part of Columbus. Because a lot of times when people come to Columbus and they're Latinos, they always ask me the same question, "Where's the Latino community?" My response to them is that years ago, our mothers and fathers that were here before us didn't want to be in one location like you see in Chicago, New York, Detroit, because they didn't want to be stereotyped, and they didn't want to experience a lot of racism. But if you go to the stores and you look around, you see there is a big population, and I hear it every day when I talk to Latinos. Everybody considers everybody that's Latino, brown-skinned, and look like me, Mexican. And we're not. You know, there's 21 different cultures between our own culture. And so I just, right now, I'm just like, "Oh, my God." I might get beat up for saying all this, but right now, I just feel it in my heart, you know, cry out, let's speech out and let them know that they're welcome, that we're not looking for their status, we're looking for their quality of life to be a part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I think your millennial roundtable could help address that.
Absolutely, Mayor Protem, and that's what I had in mind, to get the CMMA to assist with that. Yes. Next, we've got Bull Creek Golf Course update. I've got the Finance Director and Jim Art, Director of the Golf Authority, here today.
Well, hello again. So we are here pursuant to ordinance 13-39. That says before a department or office can exceed its approved budget, currently approved budget, they must do so with the permission of the council. And so obviously, you know, as I've reported on the revenues for this fiscal year, and are actually going to do April at the next meeting, Bull Creek and, well, the golf courses in general have just performed very well. I'll say that in this year of economic uncertainty, golf is obviously has been the sport to play. As of April of 2021, when compared to April of 2020, Bull Creek Golf Course, the revenues are up 83%. Oxbo Creek Golf Course revenues are up 129%. Again, you know, there were some challenges in 2020, obviously April being the month that we were shut down last year, so, you know, to some degree, we expected, you know, really outstanding numbers for April, but just year-to-date, revenues are, you know, up for both golf courses. And so at this time, what we'd like to request of the council is the authorization, because revenues are exceeding expenses right now, we need to increase the expenditure side of the budget. For Bull Creek, it's by 285,000. That is the amount that we anticipate, both Jim and I, that they'll need to operate and close out the fiscal year, and for Oxbo Creek, it is 85,000.
And so Mayor Protem and Council, you know, this is an unusual kind of situation. In all of my years around here, I have not seen Golf Authority revenue be up, period. And so in a time of a pandemic, to come and tell you that the revenue is up 83% at Bull Creek and 129% at Oxbo, and we need you to do some things to adjust the revenue expenses, and that's why he's here, is unprecedented. So it's a, you know, it's a real good problem to have, and so that's why he is here, and so you've heard the numbers, and I don't know if you, I mean, Mr. Art can come and speak, but it kind of speaks for itself. And so, but we need your approval if you want us to take care of those expenses based on that revenue being up substantially.
Yeah, I think it's attributable to Mr. Art's leadership in reorganizing the golf courses and getting them back on track. Very proud of that. I heard a lot of great compliments over the year that you've been, I hope, I think it's a year. It seems like you just got here, but you've done a great job. I think it would be helpful, maybe, to walk through some of the items of expenses that you're talking about, just so we'll have an idea of what we're voting on.
Well, in terms, obviously, sorry, I was walking away. Payroll, there is a certain amount of money that we need to finish out the year. And for payroll, for Bull Creek, that estimated number is about 77,000 of that 285,000. Then there are other expenses that, you know, they are obligated to make, such as the equipment rental and leases for the golf carts that they have on lease, that's about 36,000. Then there's horticulture and landscape supplies of about 26,000. Of course, the electricity, those utilities, that comes in at about 10,000. And then just some other operating materials that they need to operate the facility, really sort of rounds out the rest of that for Bull Creek. For Oxbo Creek, in terms of the additional expenditures, it's about a little bit over 28,000 needed to finish out the year in terms of payroll. Then they also have some equipment that is leased out of Oxbo Creek. Mainly, though, it's the merchandise for redistribution, the things that they're selling in the pro shops at both facilities, so, and that amounts to about 6,000, as well as the utilities at about 2,000.
Okay. Counselor Crabb.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Okay, so the revenue is up. I would think that the operations would still stay within the budget. Just because the revenue has gone up doesn't mean that the operations go up.
Well, to some degree, yes, but then no. As I mentioned, one of the things that Jim has done out at the golf courses is invested in the pro shop. That equipment and those items, you have to actually purchase. And so those are some of the expenditures that he's making, charging to the expense side of the budget, but then also recouping that on the revenue side. So it's an expense and a revenue at the same time.
That was the one I understood.
Okay.
What I don't understand is the additional payroll. I do kind of understand the additional utilities, because if there's more people out there, there's going to be more water, you know, possibly more electricity used. And I understood the merchandise. I don't understand the payroll. Can you explain that?
Well, it's not additional payroll. It's just payroll costs that is already in the budget, so to speak, but he's also expended monies, other monies, within the budget that we need to increase the expense side of the budget, mainly the merchandise. The payroll is not an additional cost. We're just saying that is the cost that will need to carry us through to the end of the year. It's not on top of what's already in the budget. It's just that we'll expend that amount in May, an estimated, that estimated amount in May and in June to complete the year, but he has already spent monies and made investments on some other items at the golf courses that has sort of ate into the budget.
Well, and I would think also that if you've got more people playing, then you're going to need more part-time staff, more...
Oh, that's true, too.
People assisting with facilitating. The best analogy I can use is that when we had the situation at the Civic Center, they had more events, and the revenue was up really, really considerably up, and our expenses were up because you had to work more time, more ursus and ticket takers and all of this other stuff in order to put on more events. If he's got more people playing golf, then he's going to be working. It's kind of like any business, if you, on Friday and Saturday, when your, when the business is up, you got to bring in more employees, more, so, and if it's not up on the week, then you don't bring those people in, so he's working.
Okay, so that is allowable within the budget?
Well, basically, when he, his revenue is up 83% at Bull Creek and 129,000, he can bring in some people.
Right. I mean, I get it. I just, I'm trying to understand how this works within the budget, you know, because I've kind of got the budget on my mind while we're...
And that's a good question that you're asking. I mean, and we can, I was going to say, we could bring more detail, but you're asking an excellent question, because, I mean, it makes all the sense in the world.
I've just sat here, and people have come before us saying that they needed, it's a little bit different situation. They're not, they need more money, and so they're asking us, because they need more money to hire somebody. So I guess in this situation, because they have excess funds, and they're not really asking us for more funds...
That's right.
Then they don't have to come before us to hire additional personnel. They just have to come before us and ask us if we can tweak some things so the numbers match.
Yes, because we don't want them to turn anyone away, saying, "Well, we don't have staff to cover..." I mean, just do what you got to do, and take care of the citizens in this case, because typically, when the Golf Authority people have stood there, we have subsidized Oxbo and subsidized the Bull Creek Golf Authority, and in fact, we've got a running deficit. We've had that in the past.
We've had, well, we don't have any more.
You don't have any more, but in other words, we had to subsidize them 150,000 over here and 50,000 over here, and to the tune of 200-plus thousand. We're not dealing with that, so as you can see.
Right, so that was my other question, about the subsidies, since the city is subsidizing them.
And not in this particular case. We actually think that it's very likely that Bull Creek, and hopefully Oxbo Creek, but more of Bull Creek, well, I'll just say both golf courses won't utilize a subsidy. They both have positive cash balances right now. Bull Creek in excess of 116,000, Oxbo in an excess of 46,000 positive cash in the bank.
So to be clear, we have budgeted to subsidize them, and as we come to you now, she is saying it's, in all likelihood, they don't need that subsidy.
Right. So that was my next, are we taking that into consideration? Because when I spoke with the director when he first came on, I told him that I would like to see it, you know, see these golf courses to become self-sustaining, and he's doing a great job at that. And so are we taking that into consideration on the budget about the subsidies that we provide?
Well, in terms of the subsidy for the FY '22 budget, it is included in the budget at the same amount. However, the budgets for both Oxbo Creek and Bull Creek has been significantly increased. And one of the things that we want to make sure that, what we're working with here in terms of the budget, is it's better to already have it in place and not need it than to come back to you later saying, "Hey, we need, you know, monies for Bull Creek and Oxbo Creek," because what we want to make sure of is that, you know, all of these substantial increases that we're seeing in the revenues for both golf courses isn't just pandemic-related.
Right.
If it becomes a trend...
I'm sure it's because of the new director. He's doing such a good job.
Yeah, but if we see that he stays on this track for three years, five years, then we would likely not put the subsidy in there, but...
That's right.
But there's no harm in putting the subsidy there, because if you don't, it's there if you need it. If you don't, then you don't get to use it.
That's right.
It comes back into the general fund. It comes back into the general fund and it builds your reserve.
So the subsidy doesn't go, only goes out-
If it's needed.
If it's needed.
That's right.
That's correct.
Okay. Good information to know. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I think another good point in Mr. and Director Lawrence's favor is he's just coming into his peak season now, so it's a warm weather month. So we can anticipate the track to continue and the revenues to continue growing.
That's right, Mayor Protem, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So we do need a motion and a vote.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe made the motion, Counselor House seconded, all in favor, say aye? All opposed?
Okay, and so, next, Mayor Protem and Council, we've got yard waste update, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Good morning. Want to just provide to you an update on where we are with the collection issue. I know that each and every one of you, every day, receive calls or emails regarding the backup of yard waste and of our bulky waste. We want to talk to you today regarding some possible solutions and some options that we want you, or would like for you to consider. At the end of this particular presentation as well, I want to provide you just a brief update on where we are with our new recycling automated services as well. So we'll talk about that right at the end. Right now, as you know, both of our waste types, yard waste and bulk waste, are both behind, up to two weeks or so behind on, on both of those. We are currently short, and one of the reasons is because we are short inmates. Typically, on a day-to-day basis, we get about three-hundred-and-fifty-three inmates just for waste collection. For the last several weeks or a couple of months or so, or even more, we have only been receiving about thirty-nine percent of those, or about a hundred-and-thirty-eight inmates each and every day. And of course, that puts us way behind. It's not just in waste collection or public works, but of course, we have, we're seeing the same hurt in parks and recreation and other facilities. But right now, we're here talking about the pickup and the waste collection, and so we are short. MCP every day is about one-hundred-and-eighty beds short, which means a hundred-and-eighty few inmates come to our work camp. And so those are some issues that they're dealing with. And of course, we're seeing the brunt of those as well. And then, of course, with the aging fleet that we have and not being able to keep some of that up, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. Some of the possible solutions and are, and this first one, staying on course, is really not an option. We're not looking to say, let's continue to do what we're doing, because we know every year we get behind. We get behind because of the growing season and we just can't keep up in some cases because of the aging fleet and because of employees who are out. And of course, right now, it's because of COVID, and we continue to hear that, but it's, it's act, it's true. It's because of COVID, but we're not recommending at all that we stay the course. We know that we've got to do something. So what we are, like for you to consider is seeking relief through augmenting our services. Right now, you know, we're down about five or six trucks and crews. And so with this service, we'd like for you to consider augmenting our services with a contracted service to actually go out and let them be responsible for assisting us with picking up bulk waste and yard waste. But there is a cost, and that is about a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars per month to do this. And that will provide five trucks and with a three-man crew, five days a week. That's kind of where we are, and that's what we need to get back up to, back up to current standards. Now, the alternate proposal, now this would be not augmenting our services, but totally allowing this contract to do all of Columbus, not just helping us to do it. And we're not proposing this either. And that is the three-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, three-seventy-two monthly service. Again, that's bringing them in, letting them be responsible for handling all of those pickups in terms of yard waste and bulk waste. Again, what we are asking for your consideration is that they only augment our services with the one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, one-fifty, providing for the five trucks and with a three-man crew, five days a week. We are also, and have also talked with you about some future services that we want to do. I think with this option, in terms of future look, we want to look forward in terms of automating all of our pickup services, due in part and as a result of the uncertainty of inmates that come into the work camp. We have spoken with you about the possibility of all of our household waste equipment, all of our trash trucks, getting the hydraulic sidearm trucks, where we will not have to use or utilize inmates at all. That's what we'd like to do, but of course, we certainly want to be able to, at some point, do that with not just household and recycling, but yard waste as well, so that we could then augment both, do both the yard waste pickup, but that would mean containerizing yard waste. And so that's a discussion that has to take place. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I was just wondering, how do we, how do we cover this cost? Is it in the budget?
Well, it is not in the budget, but we do believe that, again, as a result of ARP and the CARES Act monies, that we will be able to, that this would be an eligible expense, because it is COVID-related in terms of the fact that we're not able to get some certain, certain things done. So we believe that it is, it can be covered.
Yeah, because when you go from three-hundred-and-fifty inmates daily for waste collection to a hundred-and-thirty-eight, we can attribute associated with COVID. And so we believe that we would be able to use ARP dollars to support this hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, one-fifty monthly, or one-point-seven million dollars for one year, allowing us an opportunity to maybe get the inmates back, the numbers back up, or get back on track, or pursue the one-hundred percent automated collection by purchasing the equipment we need, eliminating the use of inmates. But we believe it's, it can, it's associated with COVID.
Is this a locally-owned company that, that we'd be using to subsidize?
I believe it is. I'll have to verify that. I'm sure it is, but I'll verify that.
Well, I've already brought up that I, I would like to see us privatize it, just because giving a locally-owned business more business and not competing with them. But I, I see here that it's quite pricey.
Yeah, and so, you know, we have a, a critical dilemma, as you can see. And so, you know, I don't know, we'll verify or check to see if they're local. But even if they are not local, because we can't find anyone local with the ability to have five trucks and three people per truck, I think the equipment is probably the greatest challenge, and then to be able to go throughout the community. And we're only talking the yard waste and bulky waste, you know, the washers, the dryers, the couches and stuff like that. But we got to get it done whether they're local or not. If, otherwise, the other option would be stay the course. If we cannot, we have no control over getting inmates. And businesses, as you know, are having problems hiring people. We are having problems, in this particular case, getting inmates. You can imagine going from three-hundred-and-fifty a day in waste collection to one-thirty-eight. That's devastating. And then, as a Deputy City Manager, when you couple that with aging equipment, we just, we got a problem.
And if, Council-
Excuse me, I've got a couple more in queue here. Counselor Thomas?
If you're, if you're going to address these, I'll wait, but my, my questions surround, how long will this be in place? Is this, is this our forevermore way we collect yard waste and bulky? How much is this going to cost our citizens? I am assuming there will be an additional garbage fee charge, all of those kinds of things.
Well, I-
And if you, if you're going to, you know, address those, I'll wait, but-
Well, we can, we can bring back more detail with you, for you in the next meeting. But in this case, we're behind, we don't have the personnel, the inmates, and we, I don't, there is no additional fee. We're talking about using ARP money, and so it's, in this case. And, and we're talking about one year, up to one year. And then we'll just have to reassess month to month and how we go, but the initial period would be for one year.
Does the money, excuse me, the money we're talking about continue? I mean, surely, sooner or later, the COVID money is going to stop. We're going to be beyond that, please.
Yes.
I think. And so what do we do then?
Well, and that's the thing, I'm saying this is, what we're looking, one-point-seven million of COVID funds will take us one year. We hope that by then, several things will happen. One of, a couple of different things might happen. It gives us a chance to get caught up with the inmates that we're getting, you know, or stay current with household waste. We're not behind on household waste. It's only on bulky waste and yard waste. In, in one year, we hope that the inmate numbers will get back to where we are accustomed to, not the one-thirty-eight, but the three-fifty, and then we're back on track. We don't, then we, we can continue to do the business as we're doing it today. But in the meantime, if all of the ARP money comes in for the city and county, for city and county, seventy-eight, seventy-nine million dollars, you, it's your decision, but from my perspective, as City Manager, it would take about twenty million dollars to invest, of that money, to invest in forty trucks that we will become fully automated. And that's purchasing all of the trucks and all of the, the-
Carts.
Carts as well. Twenty million dollars, and we've become fully automated, and our waste collection is not dependent on inmates. That's the goal, if we get all the money as we, we'll have to see, because we know what happened the last time. But if we get all the money, I mean, we could, we could become fully automated and not rely on inmates for that. And still, of course, we would not have, the taxpayers would not, they pay for it through the federal process, but not locally. So, we've got to look at all of the options, Counselor Thomas. But that would be the goal, to become fully automated and no more reliance on inmates, because our reliance on inmates and the unavailability of inmates is why we are where we are today. Thank you.
Counselor Walker, I'm the Counselor Garrett.
I know Public Works and I've been in constant contact about this, and we are in a critical need, so I'm not sure if you need a, need a motion to approve the contract services as a stopgap. But I know, we need to give you all in Public Works whatever support you, you need as soon as we possibly can, you know?
Well, and, and we would need a motion, and, and I can tell you that I know the mayor is not here, but I know the Mayor Protem knows that this idea of moving what we're contracting out, it, it comes directly from the mayor. I mean, I'll just tell you, he wanted, he has heard from the constituents throughout this city, just like you have.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the contract services.
Okay, we have a, first I heard a motion from Counselor Tucker. I'll, I'll use Counselor Walker's motion to, as a second. So, so what we're voting on is to fund one year, is that right?
Yes, sir.
At a monthly contract service of one-forty-eight, roughly a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand?
One, one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, five-hundred.
Okay. So all in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and it passes. Well, twelve times a hundred-and-forty.
And, and Mayor Protem, the Finance Director says you can do this now and staff will know to proceed forward, but she will bring it back formally on a purchase agenda to formally, to formalize it.
That would be good. It'd give an opportunity for Mayor Henderson to interject into it as well.
Would you repeat that, Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry. That would give Mayor Henderson an opportunity to speak to it as well.
Absolutely. And the mayor saw the urgency of this, that they, I'll tell you, the Public Works directly didn't ask for it. I didn't say put it on the agenda. The mayor says we got to do something, and we need to bring it forward, and we need to bring it forward now, and that's why it's here. So he has strong feelings about taking care of this problem.
Yeah, we've all received calls and talked to our neighbors about this issue, and I'm glad we're headed in this direction. But you're going to bring this back officially-
We will.
-the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
Okay, if there are no other questions?
Okay, I just have the one, one final, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have two more in queue. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going back to the alternate proposal of privatizing this. You say that it would cost four million, seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand, four-fifty-nine annually. Have you calculated in, in the cost savings to the city in equipment? You know, you just told us that it would take twenty million to buy trucks, and then there's maintaining those trucks, then there's personnel. Have you calculated the savings into this four-million figure?
No, that has not been, but we can certainly come back to you with this. This is strictly with them doing the entire, just the service.
No, I'm talking about-
You're talking the alternate proposal.
I'm talking about the alternate proposal that would cost us four million, seven-hundred-some annually.
That's just-
But if we, if we really considered that, what are our cost savings in payroll, equipment, equipment maintenance, et cetera? It may, it may balance out. So you're saying that those numbers are not calculated into this annual expense?
We can certainly, let us bring back a more detailed proposal, breakdown, if you will, to show you how all of that works.
Because I'd really like to, I'd really like for this option to be considered if we can figure it out financially.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, your questions are good and observation, because, you know, other communities, I hate to point to like Phoenix City, but that's, they contract out the whole thing, you know? And so they don't deal with it, other than to make sure that the private contractor is doing what they're supposed to do. So we can-
And see, I think that that's good for our community if we're employing, you know, if we're employing citizens, we're giving citizens the opportunity to, you know- if we're employing citizens, we're giving citizens the opportunity to, you know, support their businesses. I don't, you know, I don't like the idea of us competing against businesses that are local.
Sure.
And so if we have an opportunity to hire a local business to do this, I'd, I'd like to see how we might be able to do that.
Well, and again, it's done in cities much larger than Columbus throughout the United States, where they just contract it all out. But now, I, I must say, of course, when you do, it typically, typically comes at a higher cost to the citizen, the monthly fee, in, in most cases, but we don't want, I don't want to speculate, I'd rather bring you back an analysis and say, you know, here's what it costs us to do it internally as we've been doing it, you know, 10 million dollars a year, and if we contract it out for every 65,000 households, all of the same services that we do annually, here's what it would cost to do it, the total cost, and here's what that looks like monthly for each citizen.
Well, I just see that there, a business may do a different model than us and not go up and down the street once a week. They would, it would be a call-in basis or something like that, that could save them, you know, that business money, or, you know, it could, it could be structured differently in order to save the citizens some money on that side, but that would be the, the business's decision.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a good discussion, and we need to come back and kind of, you know, do a deeper dive and share more information.
That's all the comments we have. Mr. City Manager?
Okay, just one final note. On yesterday, we kicked off the new recycling program with the automated trucks. We continue to receive about 100 requests a day for new carts. I do want to mention that we've had Fort Benning to gift us, or donate us, 4,000 carts. Just got this word this week, and so we are excited about that, and we'll be picking those carts up, because right now, although we are getting carts in each and every day, because of the, the fact that it's, they're slow to deliver, we're not getting in as many as we anticipated, and so this 4,000 is certainly a shot in the arm, and so we're excited about that. Also, those citizens with the 18-gallon totes will receive their carts first. We've had some where we, in emptying those carts, we just remove those carts, those carts, instead of giving them those, their big cart first, and so we are making, going back and correcting that. Please know that if you have an 18-gallon cart, it will be serviced until all citizens receive their larger carts. That will happen. We want to remind you that as you place your recycling cart out for service, to please place the wheels against the curb and about three feet from anything else, from the household garbage can, from trees, mailboxes, or what have you, because the hydraulic arm will have to reach out, get that, pick it up, and nothing else can kind of be in the way of that. So, just wanted to put those reminders out. Again, if you have not made a request for a cart, please call 311, they will get you on the list, and we are delivering carts each and every day, or citizens can come by and pick up a cart at Public Works. And so either way, we will get that cart to you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, good one.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for...
No, sir.
Okay. So with that, we will call Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge back to the podium for the 2012 T-Sploß, the 1999 and 1993 Sploß updates.
Thank you, and greetings again to Mayor Pro Tem and counsel. This is just an update on the 2012 T-Sploß, as well as the 1999 and 1993 Sploß, to review those projects in the T-Sploß and the status of those projects, as well as look at prior Sploß that we've had at the city and what projects were funded through those Sploß. First, just looking at the 2012 T-Sploß, again, that election was held in November of 2012. It is a regional sales tax, goes through January 1 of 2013, it will expire next December 2022. Muskogee County is one of those 16 counties that's in the River Valley region. It was divided in, in two ways, 75% is for project-specific, and then 25% of that sales tax collected is distributed to those 16 counties in what's called discretionary funding. So just going through the projects that were approved in Muskogee County alone, we had the Follow Me Trail, this was a pedestrian bike trail that was complete in 2019 for 3.5 million. The Columbus River Walk, both at Bib Mill and City Mill, this was to complete those key sections of the River Walk, that is complete, that was done in 2019 for a cost of 10 million dollars. The intercity bus improvements, that is an ongoing project for different routes, additional buses, bus stops, and expanded services for 22.4 million, and they're continuing with that program at Metro. The US-27 Custer Road improvements, that was an interchange that was completed in 2018 for 20 million dollars. The Spiderweb project, this is a bridge project over the railroads. There's kind of two phases in that project. Phase one was actually bid out in February of 2020. We anticipate that construction of phase one to be complete by the end of the summer. We're also completing the right-of-way and the second phase, which is the actual bridge over the railroad tracks, will be out to bid by the end of the year. This is a 54-million-dollar project. The Buena Vista I-185 diverging diamond, that is under construction now, 46.4 million dollars. That one is scheduled for completion in 2023. The Casita Road I-185 interchange, right-of-way is currently being purchased. Construction should, should start in late 2022. We're looking at a completion date of 2025. This is a G-, a GDOT managed project at 58.2 million dollars. And then the Veterans Parkway widening, which goes into Harris County, that starts at Hancock Road, which is in Muskogee County, into Catala. Final design is underway right-of-way in, in late 2021. Again, this is a GDOT managed project as it involves two counties. We should start seeing construction by the end of this year, and that is a 40-million-dollar project. Also, part of that is what we call discretionary funding. The amount that we've received to date in Columbus is 22.1 million dollars, and what's listed here is all of the projects that either have been completed or have been budgeted for use of those funds. We've done quite a few bridge projects, Benning Drive Bridge, Claradon, Morris Road, we had the Warren Springs Road Bridge that's under design now, that should be in construction and completed in about 12 months. We've done the Infantry Road and Trail match, the Double Churches parking lot, we've done resurfacing projects, we've done a couple of signal projects that are budgeted, the Salmon Road Signal is underway now. Reese Road Bridge is another bridge project. We used some of the discretionary funds for the MLK Junior Boulevard Streetscape and Trail, and then the match for the Motz Green Project. So we've been able to do a lot of discretionary projects as well with T-Sploß funding that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise with the funding that we have for road projects locally in our operational budget. And just to review, just the projects that we've had...
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you give us some examples of some traffic calming projects that we've had? We get a lot of calls about traffic calming.
I'll have to look at our project sheet to give you the list of the traffic calming that we've actually expended out of the T-Sploß discretionary, but we do budget funds each year, it's a minimal amount, about $100,000. So it does only allocate a small portion to traffic calming that we have looked at specific areas. We're doing a traffic study on 8th Street, 13th Street, and 17th Avenue. We get a lot of requests in those particular locations, and so we have a study underway, and once we receive the results of those, of that study, we'll be able to use this funding to implement some of those results. That's the one that comes to mind specifically for this funding.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I said we don't have any more comments.
So on the 1999 Sploß, this was an election in 1999, it was a 1% special purpose local option sales tax. It ran from April 1 of 2000 to June 30 of 20, of 2008. Again, Sploß are for capital projects which are considered major, permanent, or long-lived in nature. It's not for salaries, operating expenses, for the operational budget. So in 1999, these were the projects that were funded and have been completed. Six fire stations at 5 million dollars. We did 18 million dollars of police, fire, and EMS vehicle and equipment, as well as sheriff's vehicles. The animal shelter at 2.5 million. 5 million dollars was allocated to the Liberty District. Columbus Iron Works Convention and Trade Center, 7 million dollars. The Olympic Pools at 11.7 million. 1.2 million dollar Marina at Lake Oliver. Bull Creek Golf Course at 4.3 million. Additional parks and green space improvements at 10 million, and 12.9 million on walking and biking trails. And again, this was in 1999, so obviously over 20 years ago, when these projects started. Additional projects included 3 million towards the Citizen Service Center, stormwater drainage improvements at 30 million. The Macon Road Library was part of the 1999 Sploß at 46 million. We did numerous road improvement projects at 40 million. Enterprise Zone acquisitions at 7 million. 12 million for the Muskogee Technology Park. Clean air buses at 3.4 million, and a 10-million-dollar investment at Osmo Meadow. And these were the projects outlined in the 1999 Sploß. From the 1993 Sploß, that was an election in 1993, again, a 1% special purpose local option sales tax. This sales tax ran from July 1 of 93 to March 31 of 2000. And again, a Sploß is for capital projects specific, not for operational needs, and these were the projects that were funded through the 1993 Sploß. The Civic Center was one of those projects, 33.7 million. The Public Safety Admin Building was from the 1993 Sploß at 17.5 million. Parks and Recreation was over 50 million dollars. That's where the rec centers were funded. There were additional softball fields, baseball fields throughout the community, tennis courts, trails, and other park development and playgrounds. The River Walk, the Combined Sewer Overflow was funded partially through the Sploß at 55 million, and then at that time, we did 50 million dollars of sidewalks throughout the community at 4.1 million. So I think this is just a reminder of all of the projects that have been funded through a special purpose local option sales tax, either through a T-Sploß or a Sploß in our community over the years. So I'll be happy to answer any questions related to projects.
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, the final presentation, we wanted to share that with you as we go into this final presentation. Director Rick Jones, our planning director, is gonna come forward. Director Rick Jones is gonna come forward with the, a proposed list of projects for And so, we've been talking about this for several months now, and, and I, I hope you'll maintain your seats as this list is rolled out to you. And it is still not too late to add things on this, this list, and certainly, you know, we, we need to prioritize it, but you have to see a lot of projects, and if, and so I'll just leave it at that and turn it over to Director Rick Jones.
Good morning, and I will make this as brief, but hopefully as informative as I can with you. As you may recall, back at our last work session in, in March, we brought this attention to you about projects we needed to look at for the next possible T-Sploß, and going then, we walked through that process. We shared those projects with you. Can we go ahead and have them do PowerPoint? Thank you. So what, what staff has gone back and done now is taken what we heard from U.S. council members, but also from our citizens and others, about potential projects we need to look at with this next, this next T-Sploß itself. And we, what we did, we've actually gone back and actually ranked those, those, those projects, and we'll give you a feel for that, a little taste of that, what that looks like in just a second, involved with all that. You may remember, of course, now, when we do this, this election will be done in 16 counties, and the election right now is scheduled for March of next year, and we're in, we're in, really in cooperation with these other 15 counties that surround us, in terms of how we, how the election goes, and what projects get supported and so forth, based on this one cent sales tax that comes, that comes about because of the election itself to fund these potential projects. So again, these are 16 counties in the River Valley Regional Commission area, that we're all working together to decide what those projects will look like. This is, again, it's a proposed budget that was given by the roundtable, the regional roundtable itself, and the bottom number down there, that 385 million is the number you need to concentrate on, really more than anything else, about how much we can actually fund in the way of projects. And that 385,524, 189 number is for the entire region, in terms of projects, we have money available for all 16 counties involved with that. And you also see on here, these are projections as of, as of January of this year, in terms of what the actual revenue may, may look like in terms of what happens with future projects. In doing so, the, the roundtable, as it did in 2012, also establishes what areas will get funded on these projects and how much. So basically, for roadway capital, basically major roadway projects themselves, anywhere in that 50 to 70, 70% of that total money will be set aside for that or utilized for those kind of projects. And the same thing can be said for traffic operations, for freight and logistics and so forth here. You get an idea about how much money they're gonna set aside percentage-wise, and look at utilizing for these type of projects as we go along. Each one of these now is a, is a category that we in turn took prior to the projects we got from you and from others, and we put them in these categories, so we understand, have an understanding that they could be potentially funded in one of these categories, or maybe in some cases several, but particularly in one, to carry it itself. You should know there, there were over 50 projects that were suggested for consideration. We have, we have provided you with a list of those as well this morning. Again, we assigned all those projects based on what we thought the, the right category should be for that particular project. It may, it may have appeared to be more in line with, with roadway construction, but it also may be a safety project, and we felt like if it had a better opportunity to be funded under a safety project or a safety category, then we put it in that one as well. There are three categories that are gonna have some limited interest from others in the region, so that's transit, transit capital, transit operations and maintenance, and aviation. Basically, for the most part, in, in this region, Metro is the big transit operator for all of us, and even though it doesn't serve anybody outside this county, really. There are some smaller operations that go into, into the other counties, but Metro's gonna have the biggest demand, or at least the biggest request, we believe, in terms of asking for funding for projects they've got going on from that. The same thing can be said about aviation, there are, are some smaller airports around us, but Columbus, Columbus Airport is gonna, of course, be one that's gonna be asking, again, for additional funding, more so than anybody else. Metro's request right now stands at about 26 million dollars. That's dealing with some additional electric... right now stands at about $26 million. That's dealing with some additional electrical, looking for electrical buses, for maintenance, for maintenance, for equipment, and things of that type, involved with all that from their standpoint. Columbus Airport has asked for $32 million in consideration. They are looking at trying to extend the existing runway itself, and they want to extend the runway because primarily they want to encourage cargo shipments to come into Columbus Airport. And in order to do that, they got to extend the runway. The concern I have for them on that $32 million is, based on that percentage, they're not going to quite meet that, that need. They may be more in line, if anything, somewhere in that $19 or $20 million range in terms of what the percentages are now set aside for the categories. So that's something they're going to have to work through, and we're going to have to work through with them to make that happen. But that's what they're looking at primarily from the airport itself. So in ranking the projects themselves, we went back and looked at what we use as a formula situation for any of our projects. When we deal with federal grants or our federal funding we get under, through the, the MPO or the Metropolitan Planning Organization itself, we have to establish how the, that, those funds are going to be utilized and why they're going to be utilized, and establish also a purpose for that happening. These things are here, and I'm not going to read them all to you, but you got to get an understanding that these are the things we look at when we look for projects now in terms of dealing with federal funding. And they're certainly applicable here as well for this, this funding source itself. For instance, if we look at congestion relief, we look at accommodating bike pedestrians, how feasible is the project, is it project-ready, that kind of stuff. And each one of these, each one of these items in here is assigned a point system. Basically, it could be used somewhere between 0 and 3 points. We could give that. In looking at the list that we had, we took that list, and again, using these factors, we evaluated each one of these projects. We assigned this really, this task to staff in terms of, we had four that actually did the evaluation for us. We encouraged them to do those on an individual basis first, and then we asked them to get together and collaborate in terms of how they scored, make sure there was a clear understanding. And each one of them gave us an independent score for each one of the projects that has been presented to us. And that's where you see the scoring itself as of today. I'll walk through this very quickly with you, but we'll stop, of course, for any questions involved with all this. The thing I want you to look at the top on here, though, is the heading of these slides here. Again, for like, for roadway capital, there are basically earmarking 50% to 70% of the fundings that's going to be raised in the new T-SPOLOST for roadway capital projects. 50% of that money right now is about $192 million that would be set aside for projects in the region. So you understand that we're in competition to some degree about what projects will actually get funded based on the amount of money that's available for each one of these categories.
So Director Jones, you didn't, we didn't get to decide these percentages in Columbus. It's the regional roundtable.
Yes, it did.
So these are not our percentages.
That's correct.
And so, yeah.
That's correct. Thank you for pointing that out. These are, these are the ones that the roundtable came back with, and basically they're the same ones, the same factors that were used back in 2012 for that process itself. But again, that 50%, if you just use a simple math here, on 50% of the money that's going to be, we think is going to be available, $192,762,094, it's going to be available for 16 counties. When you look at the list here we've got on here now in terms of the ratings and so forth, you see down at the bottom, we've got $170,000, $170 million already in pot for that. The importance of rating this is so that staff has an understanding about which ones this council also thinks are important to go forward with. So that when we do go into negotiation with the round, other roundtable members, we can say, we have this project at this, this amount of money that we really think needs to go forward. Or we may have a project you look at and say, we don't need, really need this project. There's no sense in fighting for it for the most part. We just need to have that understanding about which ones we really think are important. This, we believe, gives some, some kind of clarity to it that, in terms of what staff sees as important needs here for each one of these projects, starting off with Williams Road widening out there. I can go on down the list. You can see that all these projects are really important. On this particular list, these are the top 10 based on the score. There are other projects out there under this roadway capital, and be glad to share that with you as we go. But just understand, these are the top 10. And again, you can see just with these top 10, we're at, we're bumping up at $170 million out of this total pot of money. I can assure you, if there's a category in this process from the region itself, this is the one that most folks are going to go after because they want, they want to see road, roadways improved. They want to see, they want to see things of that nature happen. And I won't know that until after May 31st, when everything's submitted, what we're looking at in terms of, from others and what their involvement with. But I can assure you, there are going to be more, there's going to be more interest in this category than any other itself. You look at safety here, Second Avenue is on here, South Lumpkin Road, University Avenue is a road diet itself, double churches and road improvements would mainly from that standpoint. I have an asterisk on here about Second Avenue because we are in discussion now with GDOT about actually having to rebuild that entire roadway section from about JR Allen, which ties in JR Allen, down to 18th. There's a lot, there's a lot of brick on that, on that roadway, and there's a lot of unsettlement. And every time they go out there and try to re-circus that and try to smooth it over, it just makes, it's just like putting a Band-Aid on a very serious problem. Don't know whether that's going to involve in terms of streetscapes, but it could lessen that cost in the long run. That's just why I want to make you aware of that fact. But these, we think, are the projects looking at that in terms of that. Again, even at 15% here, you can see what we're looking at, at basically $57, $58 million. There's only, there's only going to be about $69 million set aside for this. So I don't, again, we just don't know what that entail. Traffic operations is really the keeping of the traffic moving, dealing with intersection improvements and things of that, that part. The three, the top three really came out of the recent study we did on JR Allen Parkway, US 80, in terms of how we can make, particularly around the Blackman Road, Schaumburg area, a little more functional in terms of the off-ramps and actually folks trying to get onto the Parkway at that point. The other thing here is Edgewood. The proposal, there's a proposal for a roundabout at 13th, 17th, and Lynwood Boulevard. There's another one down there at Forest, Forest Road in Chicago. This case, though, even with just, just taking 10% of the money set aside for this, we're right at $46 million over, which is over that $38.552 number I share with you for 10%. So there's some challenges that we're involved with that as well in dealing with that. Non-motorized bike pedestrian, which is basically trails, pathways, and so forth. We identified things like the sidewalks and the rocheros and the multi-use trails. This really came out of a study we did some time back about for alternative transportation throughout the, throughout the community itself. As you can see, those numbers really get really, kind of blow the whole budget out of the water just, if you just use those three. But they did, they did score high. We just want to make, make sure you're aware of that. But things like the Bull Creek Connector and Cooper Creek Connector, those are running along those creeks and tying them back into the existing trail system itself. River Road Connector, it's on here, Bradley Park, and then Liberty Theater itself with the block enhancement. All of these are there, but again, even at 5% here, we're only talking about $19 million total that can be spent out of that, or at least proposed being spent out of that proposed budget for the next T-SPOLOST. So there's going to have to be some, some creative conversation, I think, about what gets funded particularly. And I, and I suspect we're going to hear from our neighbors on this one that they want, they're going to want more trail systems throughout the, the region as well, because that is a popular thing now, not just only in Columbus, but in other parts of the region as a whole. This is the timetable.
Excuse me, Director, just a minute. Counselor Crabbe.
He can just, he can finish his presentation and I'll ask him.
Okay. This begins the timetable. We're right here now, looking at 2021 right here in May. We have, we have to submit the projects really to River Valley Regional Commission for, for the roundtable's consideration. Even though we have ranked these and scored them, we want you to show them, show them to you where we believe the importance really lies in some of these projects. However, the 50-plus we've got are still going to be submitted to the roundtable for discussion. They've got to be, in the sense that there may be something that we can fund, we didn't think we could get funded because of the power that falls out and so forth. And we won't be ready to bring another project forward if we can do so and make that happen. But we're going to submit all 50-plus projects in this whole thing. But we want to make sure you understand that the scoring really is those, kind of give us some focus about what we really should be talking about and discussing as a real need in the community itself from that. And then some final thoughts here, basically the same things we shared back in March. The election is scheduled in March of 22. It's an all or nothing election. 51% vote is, is all that's needed, and that's for the entire region. That's not just for Muskogee County, or Harris County, or Talbot County, anywhere else, for the entire region. As the region goes, so goes Columbus, basically, when it's all said and done. You can't opt out of it. The election's there. We've already established that from that standpoint. Should the voters approve the referendum, the, I got on here, still got July, but it'll go into effect really into January of next year in 2022, 23, for that, because the tax itself, the existing tax, doesn't roll off until '22. We'll have to only provide a 10% match for our LIMIC funds if it does get approved, which is a good thing for us. If it doesn't, if it gets rejected, though, we'll have to provide 30% match to our LIMIC funds, right into that. And then if we get the roundtable, can't come to any capital degree, but the LIMIC fund go, match goes to, goes to 50%. So there's something of a carrot stick approach in that regard, yes. But those, that's where we are with this. We'd like, of course, hear some of your feedback as well.
Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I'd like to go back to the airport.
Okay.
Because I don't see it on this list.
They're not on that list. They were not, they were not ranked because neither them nor Metro were ranked as far as the process, because they were a standalone operation, knowing full well that they were, they were going to get funded to some degree, no matter what. They were not, if that makes any sense. We were trying to rate, rank these road projects to have an understanding about which ones we believe should be funded first, more than anything else. But the airport and Metro, I don't want to say are guaranteed, but they're in a better, better position to get funded in some of these road projects.
Well, and so would you explain that, those percentages that I talked about that we didn't declare, that they were declared by the regional roundtable, they set the percentage?
Right.
And so they set a percentage for transportation. And so when you think about transportation, do you have transportation in, in Talbot County and all these other counties? So if you set a percentage for transportation, you got to look to see who's got transportation. And, and so would you talk about that for a second? Like, I mean, I don't know how many of them, I think some of those rural counties may have small or rural, urban-type transportation, but they don't have an airport, and they don't have a public transit system. And so those percentages are going to be, if you set, set aside that for transportation, it's going to be Columbus for the most part.
Okay, because I see with what's happening in the old Best Buy building, being a logistics company, and the proximity to the airport, you know, possibly a back door between those two properties. And if we could build our cargo facilities and extend the runways, we're getting American Airlines in here now. I, I think those are very, very important projects going for, moving forward.
Yeah. And Counselor Crabbe, I would, I would agree with you 100%. In my conversations with the airport manager about that, to get an understanding about what they're trying to achieve, I think it's doable. I think it needs to be done from, from that standpoint. My concern to her was when we, when we had our first conversation about extending the runway, was that going to require additional property going, going further, I guess, to the north and to the east, whatever. And she said, no, they, they could, they could handle it on the site, which made me feel a lot better because I could just, I could understand what potential battles we would have with the surrounding property owners and so forth that we just didn't need. But I think what she has proposed to me and to others is she would actually provide cargo sites on, on, on the airport itself that someone that's, is delivering packages, or whatever the case may be, could actually do their operations there, much like you see in other airports. And I think it would be a, a, a real win-win situation for us all if that could happen. My concern, and I've, I've tried to communicate this back to her since we talked, but my concern right now is if she's proposing a need for like $32 million, I'm not sure where that, where that other $12 million comes. Because she, at best, she may get 19, 18, 19 millions, maybe, as part of this election process. But that's, that's a big maybe because there's, again, there are still others in the, in the region that may ask for that money as well, or, or consideration for a project. I can, I can almost say that there's smaller operations that may want to do something to improve, but not to the extent that the Columbus Airport's going to be asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Jones, I think that it's important for our citizens to know that there are some of the projects that we're going to be looking at, dealing with, that are not in Muskogee County, but are, will be on that ballot, and that in this round of paying for some of these projects, as I recall, there were several projects that perhaps started in Muskogee County, but the road went on into Harris County, or the road went on into Chattahoochee County, and that was on, on the ballot. One of the things that I would like for you to tell our folks, too, is who, who makes that decision? Who is the roundtable? We've said today, over and over and over again, the roundtable makes that decision. Well, who is that?
And I appreciate the question.
Not necessarily by name, but by position or by whatever.
And I appreciate the question, Counselor Thomas, because I think it's, it's important. With the other 16 counties, there are representatives based from two of each, two members from each of the counties and so forth. And in our case, it's, I think it's yourself and the mayor who bake up, who are representing the round, representing us on the roundtable from that standpoint. But there are representatives from other, of course, other counties and other municipalities that are doing that. And they might, they come together with the understanding that they are to formulate an idea about what projects need to be funded, how much money is, is there set aside for that, which I've already shared with you. And they make that determination about what projects can go forward. They, they're the ones that did, that have established really the, the formula, if you want to call that, in terms of the categories I shared with you, that how, which each category, the amount of each category get funded. And then they are looking now to basically all the, all the municipalities and county governments to come up with that list, that shopping list, that wish list, whatever you want to call it, about what projects can, can be funded on this next go-round. This is a 10-year process, much like we're doing with the one right now that was started back in, was actually voted on in 2012. We're slowly coming to the end of it, and next year, we will actually end the collection of the tax for that, for those projects. And that's why the, the region as a whole, now, has said, we want to do this again because we've had success with it in terms of this. There is, not only do we need to reemphasize this point again, too, not only do we get the funding for the projects we set aside and determine, and everybody votes on, but we also get 25% of that, that money, that, that total money, total package that's going to be collected for discretionary funds.
And we decide the discretionary funds.
And that's another great point. I want to make sure everybody understands, this is, when it comes to the money, this is our money. This is not going back to the state GDOT, or it's not going back to the federal highway. This is our money. There is a mechanism established for that in terms of how we, we receive that money back and how there is some accountability for that money. But when it's all said and done, it's, this is our money in these 16 counties. It's not, it's not, we're not spending this money on Atlanta. We're not spending it anywhere else in the state. This stays within this region, because we're generating that, those funds. So that's the importance of it. There is, there is a representation process. And once the, once the roundtable has made that determination about what projects go forward, they will then release that and ask for it to be put on the ballot for the voters to decide if they want, if they want to, if they want to go forward with this kind of operation or not. And again, like I said, that will happen in March of '22 right now, which was being proposed for that election to occur. And again, like I said, that will happen in March of twenty-two right now, which was being proposed for that election to occur.
Thank you.
So Mayor Protem, I don't know if there are any other questions, but let me just say that this has to be submitted to the roundtable by May thirty-first.
Yes, sir.
So we will come back at the fourth Tuesday meeting, maybe with a resolution or something.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
For this list of projects. And I, I will say to you, if there's a project between now and the next council meeting that's not here, that you discover needs to be on this list, you need to let us know as soon as possible so that it can be added to the list. And so we'll ask you for, to approve a resolution or a resolution approving, forwarding this list to the regional roundtable. And, and then this will be our list of projects. Obviously, again, they won't all get funded, but at least you know what's on the list. And, and then the mayor and Counselor Judy Thomas are members of that roundtable from these totals sixteen counties. And so we'll have representation on the roundtable. And hopefully, out of that, we'll get a good list of projects. And then if it gets approved, we'll have a lot of work going on in Muskogee County, and the momentum, momentum continues. And so, but if you have a project and it's not on this list, or someone calls you because they saw this on TV and we need to add something to this list, let Director Rick Jones and Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge know. And then when the list comes forward on the twenty-fifth, it'll, it'll be on that list.
Thank you, sir. No question, oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Tucker.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question about the project that's on this, this rating, the ranking list. So the roadway project, it states a hundred and ninety-two point seven million, but out of the ten projects, the total is one hundred and seventy point six five million. And when you go down to safety, it says fifty-seven point eight million with a total of sixty-nine. So of course, we went over the budgeted amount for the ranking in reference to the projects. But with the roadway, roadway capital, it's showing that it's under. So would you be able to use money from different areas? Like the roadway, roadway project since it's still like twenty-two million left in that budget for safety?
Yes, ma'am. My, my short answer is yes, you can. There, this is not a, not a, an issue that's simply black and white, where you just simply go in and submit a project or a project list, say, we want all these funded, can you deal like them or not? There's, of course, we're, like I said, bad choice of words on my part, but it is something of a competition with other counties, other local governments, because they have their needs as, as well, in terms of what they're looking for, in terms of projects. And so we may only get five of those top ten based on that. But we also, and also it may be a thing where, for lack of a better term, there, there's money basically left over in the proposed budget. And there may be some other things, like there's some, some wiggle room, if you want to call it that, where we could add another project or two, too, that based on the amount of money itself. We did this back in twenty-eleven, I don't recall that being the case. It was, it was pretty tight in terms of that budget. But the numbers we've given you today are just, just that, to show you what, how much, what the real need is here and how much it would cost us to do some of these projects. If, like, and again, for the, the roadway construction projects itself, if there is some funding left over, yeah, that, that may be able to, we can spread that to other, other categories and so forth. And same thing for, from some of the other categories. It just depends on what the actual need and want and desire is really from the other communities as well. So there may be some, some, some room we can adjust those funding around. I can, I can almost guarantee you this, there's not going to be any money left on the table when it's all said and done, that all, that everybody's going to go in with the same idea that we're going to get these projects funded. And that's what we're going to do here. We just need to make sure we understand exactly what your priorities are for these projects. We've given you ours as far as how we can, we can score them, but you may have a better understanding or better need for what that, that ranking really should be, and that's what we're looking for.
Well, and, and I, I think, I don't want to put worst in your mouth, but I, I think I hear a concern that you know how important Steammill Road is. And if these are, if this is sixty-nine million and you got fifty-seven million, and you go in that priority order, Steammill Road would not make the cut. I think that's what I'm hearing. And, and so you want to know that can some money be moved from somewhere else to make sure that because of the importance of the safety on that road, we know that, you know, I can start naming off all of the fatalities. I mean, I know them in my head on Steammill Road. And, and that is a concern. And, and so, but that's how the projects are rated at this point. I don't know how many fatalities on any of the others versus Steammill, but there are many on Steammill fatalities.
Yeah, and this is not, this, we can try to give you my best example on this real quick. If we get into that situation, though, where we, we have, I don't know, there's another, there's another nine million dollars out there, we can't fund some of these other bigger projects, we would certainly look at, at dealing with Steammill Road, for instance, because we know we can fund that project. That's where, that's where it really gets down to negotiations more than anything else, is understand that you can negotiate really in terms of what project can and cannot be funded. There's some big-ticket items on there, money-ticket items on there, we, we know we'd, we'd like to see it get funded, but it may just not happen because the money's just not there. And that's, but we're going, that's what we're, we're going to go with that understanding that things like Steammill Road or Brennan Road or anything, any of these other roads that we've got in Columbus like that, we're going to go in there with the idea that these projects need to be funded. And we're going to try to figure out a way, how they can be funded without, without losing anything else in, in the long course.
Well, well, actually, looking at the, the rank order, Steammill Road would come in at fifty-seven million because we are ranked number four in Double Church's Road improvements would be off the list. If you go in this ranking order. So in all actuality, I was looking at all of us because I feel like safety should be one of the most important things that we focus on. So Steammill Road, if we went in this, this rank order, would actually make the cut based on this fifty-seven point eight million dollars. And Double Church's Road would not make the cut. And with this being a safety project, it, it would seem like we would ensure that all five of these get funded.
Because of safety, yeah, okay. Any other questions, Mayor Protem?
No, sir.
Okay, if not, that concludes my agenda today.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. For the Clerk's Agenda, item one is a resolution to change the time for the regular meeting of June eighth to five-thirty P M. The council would hold a special call meeting on June fifteenth at nine o'clock A M. And change the time of the regular council meeting of June twenty-second to nine o'clock A M. The June first proclamation session and the June twenty-ninth.
Motion to approve.
Consent agenda would be canceled.
I hear a second. Motion to approve the resolution dates changed for meetings. Is there a second? Okay, we have motion and a second.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Protem, who made the motion? Who made the motion?
Counsel Tucker and Counsel Crabb seconded.
Thank you.
And all in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Counsel Thomas has a question, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Sorry.
Is one of these, the public meeting for the, for the citizens of Columbus to take a look at the budget, proposed budget? Aren't we required to do that?
We'll get the Finance Director to respond to that.
Hello again, I'm sorry, Madam Budget Chair. So the question was, in terms of the meeting schedule that the clerk is bringing before the council, is it required for us to make these changes in accordance with the Taxpayer Bill of Rights?
Yes.
And that is correct. The Taxpayer Bill of Rights, the first hearing for that is, we have to have three hearings for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, as well as a hearing for the budgets, for citizens who want to comment on the budget within itself. The first hearing for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights is June eighth at nine A M. That will be here at the Trade Center. We, we are required by law to have two meetings that same day, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. So we're also changing the council meeting schedule so that the second hearing is conducted as part of the regular council meeting, and that's set to start at six P M. We also have to advertise the budget in, in accordance with our charter for, again, public, it's the first reading of the budget ordinance, and so the public has the ability to, to comment. It's a public hearing anytime an ordinance is on first reading.
So are you saying that the, the first meeting for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights will be at five-thirty on the June the eighth? And then there will be another Taxpayer Bill of Rights meeting at six o'clock that same day?
The first meeting for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights will be at nine A M. on June eighth.
We just canceled that?
No, we canceled June one and June twenty-nine.
A resolution to change the time for the regular council meeting of June the eighth to five-thirty P M.
And, and Madam Counselor, that is not, it does not require that it be at a council meeting. And typically, we've had those public hearings and they were not council meetings, like we met in council chambers and nine o'clock and have that public hearing. Typically, we will have one or two people show up, but it's not a council meeting.
Right, it's not a council meeting.
City Attorney.
It's just a nine o'clock meeting for the Taxpayer Bill of Rights only.
That's correct.
It's not a council meeting at that point.
That's correct.
That'll be later that evening.
That's correct.
Okay.
At, at which time we'll hold the second Taxpayer Bill of Rights meeting.
And that's at a council meeting.
And that is at a council meeting.
And so.
Maybe you ought to come fix my calendar.
And, and this is the same exact schedule we've done in prior years, same way, that, that nine o'clock is not a council meeting, and that evening, because you got to have, I guess, three?
You have to have a total of three.
Have to have a total of three.
Two in the same day.
So that's how we've done it every year that I can remember.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The resolution has been approved. Item number two, the Board of Zoning Appeals, received an email correspondence from Mr. Pruitt advising that the board did vote to request that the seat of Mr. Charles Smith be declared vacant.
Do you hear a motion? Counsel Tucker made a motion and Counselor Woodson seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Next are Minnesota's boards to be received.
Motion received by Counsel Crabb, seconded by Counsel House. All in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, I would like to add three resolutions excusing Counselor Barnes, Davis, and Huff from today's meeting.
Moved by Counsel Woodson, seconded by Counsel Tucker. All in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Next, we have board appointments. The first appointment is the mayor's appointment, and this one will be brought back for the next meeting. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Employees' Benefits Committee Assistant Fire Chief Tim Smith was nominated to succeed Captain Ron, and he may be confirmed.
Moved by Counsel Woodson, seconded by Counsel House. All in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Next, for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Ms. Wanda Jenkins was nominated to serve another term of office. She may be confirmed.
Moved by Counsel Woodson, seconded by Counsel House. All in favor say aye.
Also, for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Mr. Matt Horn was nominated to serve another term of office. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation by Counsel Crabb, and then seconded by Counsel House. All in favor say aye.
Next, for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Dr. Corretta Venable was nominated to serve another term of office. She may be confirmed.
Moved and confirmed by Counsel Tucker and seconded by Counsel Woodson. All in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
And also for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Ms. Anne Rougaw was nominated to serve another term of office. She may be confirmed.
Moved and confirmed by Counsel Woodson, seconded by Counsel Tucker. All in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes.
Next, we have council district appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have district representative seats, council district two, seven, three, four, five, and eight that are open for nomination from the respective council districts. Next.
I think they're going to touch base with you over the next, they'll touch base with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, this particular seat, the new appointees must fall within the one through nine categories. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission, Mr. Brian Abada, he's not eligible to serve another term of office. And Mr. Mayor Protem, we are working with the Parks and Recreation Department to seek a recommendation and nomination for that seat.
Thank you.
The Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the at-large seats, we have David Goldberg, Oz Roberts, Dr. William Kendall, Fran Flucker, Orlean Bachman, Larry Derby, Courtney Loughlin. All of these seats are open for nominations. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council, for the Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities, we have the seat of Mary Ann Young. She's eligible to succeed. We have not received confirmation from her if she's interested in continuing to serve. We also have Beverly Garland. She is not eligible to serve another term of office. For the Tree Board, we have two seats that are open for nominations. For the upcoming board appointments, we have the Board of Water Commissioners, as well as the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners. And just one final comment, Mr. Mayor Protem, I did just want to join the others in congratulating Dr. Isaiah Hughley on his accomplishment. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have, before we adjourn, I know the city attorney wants an executive session, and before we do that, Ms. Hedges from the Public Agenda has asked for her additional three minutes. So again, one.
So again, once, uh, she states her name and address, then I'll start the clock, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Katie Hedges, and address is eight-one-five-five Maundy Lane, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-zero-four. And I just wanted to come back and give a little bit more clarification. Um, also wanted to point out that Neighbor Works, the representatives here today, did not stop me. I was out in the lobby with my kids. They never made any sort of effort to address, uh, my concerns today. And so, that was a little disappointing, but I am hopeful that they will, um, continue, well, that they will do that, that they will actually address my concerns. Um, I did want to comment on the, I believe that Neighbor Works sent an email to each of the counselors, as well as the mayor, yesterday. Um, and I wanted to make a few comments on them, because I have some documents inside the packet that I gave out, um, that actually prove what I'm saying. Um, one of the things that I noticed in the email was that, um, Melanie said, we were not, uh, she, that she told us that Neighbor Works was not responsible for any wear and tear, normal wear and tear on the home. And I just want to clarify that I never had an expectation that they would be responsible for that. Um, when I contacted them, I was looking to see if we could apply and be approved for a grant or a loan. I was never blaming Neighbor Works for anything. I didn't have any sort of expectation outside of, can I qualify for a loan? Um, I'd also like to point out that, um, towards the bottom of that email, um, I'll just read what it says. In fact, this was something that, um, Neighbor Works reached out to the same environmental technician, apparently, and, um, is quoted him as saying, "Factory baked-on glazes and other finishes are not deemed to be lead-based paint, as they are not painted surfaces. Therefore, they're exempt from the lead disclosure rule, as noted. The tile is safe for household usage, as the baked-on glazing and pigmentation is not a common cause for childhood lead poisoning." Uh, so I'd just like to question, why then did Neighbor Works, um, put on the scope of work six thousand dollars' worth of federal funding to redo my bathroom? If the tile was not, in fact, dangerous, and was not, um, you know, any sort of hazard removing it, or anything like that, why on earth would they have put six thousand dollars towards the scope of work? In your documents, I do have that, I have the contract, um, as it states the removal of all of that. Um, so, that's, that's basically all I wanted to say. Um, I do want to just encourage the counselors to keep in mind for the future, um, just, we want to be careful where federal funding is going, if mistakes like these are going to be made, um, and then not corrected. So I would love to point you to some of the information in the packet, if anyone has any questions specifically about the contract, or, um, the wording from the exact, the exact wording from the lead inspector who came out and looked at our, at our home, and I spoke with.
Okay, um, your, your three minutes is up, and Counselor Tucker had those have a question?
Um, my question is for the city attorney. I know we have tenant landlord laws. Are there any laws, um, that apply to this situation in reference to her complaint?
It, it would strictly come down to the terms of any written contract between her and her family and Neighbor Works, and there is some, uh, Georgia law on, you know, liability of landlords for various things, once they're put on notice. Now whether those statute of limitations may have passed, I don't know, but it's the kind of thing that would normally be mediated if there was a lawsuit, or you would be sent to a mediator to try to work it out before actual litigation. But, um, it would depend on the exact contract between Ms. Hedges and Neighbor Works, uh, whether there was anything specific in there, in addition to what's in Georgia law.
Um, did they enter into a contract with you, ma'am?
Yes, they did. Um, it's actually in your packet. Um, if you flip to the third paper clipped, um, section, you'll see two sticky notes. One says the scope of work. You can flip directly to that and see twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars' worth of work. And the next page is the official contract that we entered into with Neighbor Works and with the contractor who is going to do the work.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, is there anything that we can do to assist her, kind of point her into the right direction? Because is, is this legally binding, this contract, with her and Neighbor Works?
I mean, we can't give an opinion on the contract, that's not a city party contract, but I can tell you, if she has consulted a lawyer, that would be her best bet to discuss a possible claim under the contract with the lawyer, and that may still be within the statute of limitations, but, uh, I just can't comment on the specifics of that contract.
Okay. I, I can't think of, I, I'm trying to think if there are lawyers, um, that do kind of like pro bono work, or something, because I'm, I'm seeing you, you're a mother, and I don't know if you said four or five kids?
Five.
It's five. So, um, if you had the money, you wouldn't be here.
Right.
Um, and you wouldn't need assistance, so that's why I'm trying to push on, you know, which, which way we can kind of lead you. Is there some type of, um, advocate that, that could possibly help her?
If, if I may respond just really quickly to that, um, I'm not sure if it would be, um, if you would be willing, as a counselor, to actually reach out to Neighbor Works, um, and, and say specifically, I, you know, I support the Hedges, and, you know, what needs to be done should be done, and it should be the responsibility of Neighbor Works. I understand you may not have a legal, um, ability to make anything happen, but I do think that maybe some pressure could be put on them, because I am still hopeful that they will do the right thing. Um, and with future funding in mind, I feel like that might be, I would, I would appreciate if anybody would, would be willing to reach out to them and just say, you know, maybe you should do the work.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
I, I was, I was going to say, I'm not sure if, um, community reinvestment can help you. Um, Director Robert Scott is in the bag.
Yes, I've spoken with him, um, at length over this, and I think that we're ki, that's kind of why we're here, because I don't know that there's any more that they can do. Um, they've been very, very helpful so far, um, but, yeah, especially Mr. Scott.
Okay, well, maybe he can give you some more information, and maybe we can pull something, but definitely want to help you, because this is a unfortunate, um, incident that you're going through, um, for, for your family.
I appreciate that.
City Manager?
Um, well, I, I was actually going to come in on, uh, the, the scheduled timeline, but I, I will say that, you know, to Ms. Hedges, um, I was going to come in on something different. Uh, I, you know, this is, um, you know, you, you've got a situation here, and, and, and of course, you've shared it with the elected officials, and I see that the Neighbor Works President and CEO is here, Mayor Protem, and, um, I, I'm just afraid that, from a precedent standpoint, that we are about to let something that's not within the realms of your control get into a private matter, because now I know that the President and CEO wants to speak, and, um, we got a lot of people waiting for the next, for the budget review session.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm not suggesting that you're not speaking, I'm just making an observation that we are into a matter that you can't control. And, uh, but now we, we've started it, and so, and she's in her final three minutes as she came back on public agenda, and, and, uh, she's invoked the name of Neighbor Works multiple times, and so, now we find ourselves in an extended meeting, in a situation that's going to go back and forth on something you have no control over, and, and, and maybe this is this one, but that's, that's the situation we have at hand.
Yes, sir, I, I regret that, that we've allowed ourselves to get this far in it.
Yeah.
We, the mayor advised Ms. Hedges that there's nothing we can do. Um, it's up to council if we, they wanted to make a motion to allow Ms. Williams to speak, since we are in, uh... Okay. I need a motion. To give three minutes? Okay, all in, second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, Ms. Williams, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and, uh, counsel, Dr. Hughley. Um, I just, I'm not going to even take three minutes, because I'm just going to set the record straight on a couple of facts that, um, that Ms. Hedges has, uh, let's just say, been a little disingenuous on. Um, first of all, on the contract, Counselor Tucker, that contract is very specific to the funding source, which was DCA chip, and it varies, it very specifically specifies that if that funding source is not made available, that that contract is void. And that's exactly what happened. It was determined through our due diligence that this house would not be eligible for this grant, and so we had to void the contract. As far as the warranty work of the tile, we were not notified in the warranty period. You know, we've built hundreds and hundreds of homes in this community. It's the first time in twenty-three years we've been dragged before council in an attempt to coerce work out of us, and, and that's not going to work either. We have, I think this falls definitely under the no-good deed unpunished. We tried to help the Hedges family. Uh, Mr. Hedges is the customer of Neighbor Works, and we really did try to find some funding that would assist her with her concerns in her home, uh, and we were unfortunately unable to do that, and that's just the facts. So I, I would be happy to answer any questions. Um, you know, we have been in contact with her consistently, we have text messages just late February, just a little while ago, trying to explain to her the reality of the situation. So if anybody has any specific questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them here or later, but at the end of the day, the facts are the facts, and we have done the right thing, and we have tried very hard to please this family. Some families are not going to be pleased. And I appreciate your time and allowing me to at least address some of the accusations that have been brought against me and my organization.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I would ask, um, counselors that want to talk with Ms. Williams to do that on your own, so that we can move on to the next phase of the meeting. Please? Thank you. I, do I hear a motion to go on executive session?
For litigation and personnel.
For litigation and personnel.
And?
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
And Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes, sir.
What, what I recommend is that we do executive session in this room, and we deal with council chambers, that all the guests will leave, include, um, the, um, CCGTV personnel, and, and, uh, we'll have executive session, and then we will have a brief lunch, and, um, and then try and reconvene, we'll just say around one-fifteen.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, council is back. We, uh, met in executive session regarding personnel and litigation. No votes were taken. Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will call up two resolutions that have been distributed around the table. The first resolution would, uh, after consideration, deny the refund request of Exide Technology and Exide Environmental Response Trust dated March one, twenty-twenty-one, in its entirety. Request for refund denied, and that is on the table for adoption.
Do I hear a motion? Counselor Tucker, motion to deny? Let me rephrase that. The resolution is to deny, so we are voting in favor of the resolution to deny. So your motion is to pass the resolution. Counselor Woodson seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
All right, that refund request is denied. The second item we need to vote on is, uh, risk management settlement. This will settle all claims of Larry Underwood, uh, from an incident which occurred on August one, twenty-seventeen, for a total of two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, including attorney fees. That's ready for adoption.
Motion by Counsel Crabbe to approve the resolution, seconded by Counsel Woodson. All in favor say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
That, that's all we had. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you.